An appointment that she had to make, and Mr. Spencer just walked into the room. Good afternoon, sir.
Hey.
Please eat, Tom. Sharp drifts, man. All right. Okay. I'm just looking around the room here, and I think everybody's familiar enough with the rules of the committee of the whole, so I'm not going to go into those. That brings us to the Boyd Forum. There should be some sign-up sheets for you back here. Do we have any yet, maybe? Okay, we don't. And Boyd Forum, you get one minute. Speak pretty much everything you -- yes, ma'am. Anything you want to. However, I'll qualify that by saying that most of it is to bring things to the city's attention that -- not just things of general interest. That usually, the general interest items where you get four minutes is meant for open forum on Thursday night. We have two chances at that, the 30 minutes before this business part of the city council meeting. Mr. Peacock, welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Peacock.
And the other is unlimited time, four minutes per, at the end of that meeting. Ms. Dubuson?
Yes, good afternoon, counsel, and thank you again for this Boyd Forum opportunity to speak to the government. First, I want to celebrate with you the wonderful weekend that we had here in Pensacola as a result of so many departments of the city working with the new event, the March Madness, and I thank the administration and all of you for whatever you did to make that happen. The reason I rise this evening is that I attended the Parks and Rec Board meeting on Thursday morning of last week, and I was a little concerned that the suggestion that the Parks Board's role was strictly advisory and therefore maybe they should think about evolving into a financial funding support mechanism was made by member staff. And I am concerned that the citizen committees that this council has complete ownership of and ability to, you know, charge, to look into things and respond to you, are not being encouraged in as strong a manner as possible. The Environmental Advisory Board continues to wish to have meetings, and that still has not occurred. And so I would ask counsel to look at your council structure that was in place and reestablish it, and look at what charges the citizenry can work on and work with the staff so that as the staffing is being overextended sometimes by our exuberance for expanding city activities, that maybe citizens can help and can bring a balance and get the communication out to a wider level than what's happening right now. Mr. Reynolds and I have had contacts about the communication to the public, and I would just like to see a broader sharing of information as things are evolving so that the citizens are not just shocked by decisions that are made, even though you folks may all know about it and staff may know about it, the citizenry is not being brought along in the developmental aspect through communication. So maybe the committee structure might be one way that some of that could go forward. So that's just my suggestion of the day. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. I guess the President's Hall, right? It's been a while since I addressed this body. Thank you very much. I'm John Peacock, soon to be a resident on 107 South Bayland Street in the fine city of Pensacola. I'm here today to talk about how difficult some things are to actually do business in the city of Pensacola. My wife and I are investing, let's say, a sizable amount of money redoing a project on South Bayland Streets. We've had several issues dealing with the DIB that cause impediments there. I know that's on the agenda today, so I'd like to address a couple of those. The first one being, we had to rent a dumpster spot for 150 bucks. When you look at the tax base that we're going to improve, I would think those little nickel dime things run people away. Not that 150 bucks is going to kill me, but it's just those things. Plus, my builder took him a couple of weeks to get the permit because of, they just couldn't find the permits, I guess. And then after he had it there, they called him back and said, "Oh, by the way, you also have to rent some barrels with lights," which, again, took time out of my builder's schedule. Today, we met with a whole bunch of contractors, again, investing our time and resources in the city of Pensacola. Came at seven o'clock, came out at 8:30, and there were tickets on all our cars. You know, there's got to be a way to encourage people to invest in the city of Pensacola. I get, we've got parking issues, every city does. When you're investing the kind of money we are, or anybody is, I would think something as simple as, here's a set number of parking passes, use them as you will for a set period of time, and we're going to kind of waive that as long as you don't block right-of-ways and all those kind of things. So these guys aren't having to find quarters, for God's sakes, instead of doing the important work of revitalizing our city. So please address that with the DIB. We don't need a government entity that's a counter to what you guys are trying to do is get more people to move into the city, I would think. We don't need those people running people away. So thank you very much.
So you're saying your construction workers, then, were the ones getting the tickets?
No, my wife, myself, the contractor, the builder himself. The only reason, really funny, the only reason the contractors didn't get a ticket, they didn't even park in spots. They just parked right in front of my place. We actually parked in a spot, God forbid, but it was at seven o'clock in the morning. You know, again, we parked there, we planned on being out of there before the business of the day. Every time I go down there during the normal day, I put my quarter in. But it's just that irritants, right? I get it, but people that want to invest in our city don't need that. You know, we want people to come here willingly, spend their money on the things that can improve our tax base, not parking. You know, generating more money for DIB is not helping the city of Pensacola.
Well, I can tell you that I have Mr. Kimbrough's ear, 107 South Bayland. Is that Mr. Spencer or Mr. Townsend?
I'm not sure.
It's Mr. Townsend.
Well, y'all don't want me? I'm not running, okay? I'm not running.
The line runs right.
Y'all can claim me, it doesn't matter.
Runs down the middle, what side?
I'm on the west side.
You're on the good side.
On the good side.
You're on Mr. Townsend's.
That's good. Thank God.
Okay. All right. Sir, thank you for coming here, and I apologize to you for that. You know, there's a two-sided issue with the DIB and their parking enforcement. The part that you're not experiencing necessarily right now is just how much better the turnover in parking is downtown, which encourages more people to come down. I've had four tickets from the DIB. I've had four of them, and it's up to that maximum amount now that they can collect from me. The only one I ever got angry about is I was in the parking space for less than five minutes. I was standing 10 feet away from my car, and I was doing an interview with W., whatever Channel 10 is, over in Mobile. Within that five minutes' time, while I'm standing there talking to the camera, and it was on the street where I was the only car parked besides the Fox 10 news truck. You know, it wasn't like there was competition for those spaces. They came over and gave me a ticket.
Mr. President, I'm not arguing that we don't need an organized parking plan, not arguing that at all.
I understand.
What I am arguing, though, is when you have people investing money, whether it's a business or residence, wherever, in our city, there needs to be contingencies and give them some type of leeway, whether it's parking passes or whatever. I mean, I'm not a rocket scientist, not good with numbers, but I would think a $700,000 investment in the tax base that comes with that far outweighs a $10 or $20 ticket.
I've got, Mr. Townsend would like to...
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, John, for bringing forth this. Recognizing that we did, in fact, give the parking agreement, the parking issued, to the DIB, we do feel that we don't want to establish anything that's going to cause a detriment to the growth of the city of Pensacola, which I think you would agree, that's our foundation. We really want to see Pensacola grow. I would think that if there are some detriments that are causing some inconvenience to folks who are trying to do something down there, that it appears to be that the DIB personnel are, in fact, agreeable in terms of trying to work with folks to ensure that we won't cause any adverse reaction. So I would think that if you haven't taken this issue to Mr. Kimbrough and all the parking committee, because I think we might have representatives who are on the parking committee in place here today, but I think we could, something that we could work out, and it shouldn't be a biggie, if we've got folks who want to accept this business down, I think that's one of their priorities, to get folks down here. So we don't want to do anything to, you know, act as a counter to that effort.
I would hope, Mr. Townsend, that we could develop a policy so that isn't incumbent upon the residents or resident or the business owner to go to the DIB or to the city, and that they recognize in what they're doing, they welcome that and offer that assistance ahead of time, instead of waiting for us to get so angry that we have to take our time to come down to city hall to complain. And say, "If you're going to build something, we're going to give you a four-month, five- and six-month pass. Here's how you use it, here's what you do. Let us know if there's any issues. We welcome your business." Don't wait on every individual resident and business owner to get so fired up that take time out of their other businesses to come down here and complain. That's not what, you guys don't want to hear that either.
Yeah, it probably shouldn't be a matter of communication, so hopefully you'll get that together.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Spencer, and then Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Peacock. What, I want all of us to be very attentive and creative and responsive to not only Mr. Peacock, but those that follow him. And what I've just thought of, as you made this presentation, is, and this does marry the DIB and the city in terms of being better communicators, is that when building permits, including just demolition permits, are issued, and that runs through the city building department, that should trigger, that should be the opportunity for them to then provide informational handout that directs you to the, what I hope will be, the passes for construction workers, a certain color card issued for a certain time period, and then also, most importantly, at certain locations, you're at what I call a secondary street on Bayland, and then there's even tertiary streets, third levels. And what disturbs me the most is, and I paid some parking tickets today, is when I see the streets in the morning and throughout the day that are never beyond 10% to 20% capacity, and people are being ticketed at those, again, secondary, tertiary streets. And I have asked the DIB in our workshop to consider confining their most aggressive pursuit of violators on our most important high-density streets until our city grows out. I consistently, as representative of District 6, who shares a street with Councilman Townsend, am just asked why it is happening to them on streets that just does not have, appear to ever have a parking demand or supply issue. Finally, I want everyone to understand that even the workers that were county workers, electricians, plumbers, these carpenters that were working on a project downtown, came to me for help just because of the cost burden for those workers to handle that parking is disproportionate to their compensation. Finally, these are people that work with their hands, with their tools, the tools of the trade are their company assets. For many of them, that represents their entire company assets, and they need to have and prefer to have those assets parked close to them because of the value, and also carrying them back and forth. So I am sorry that you had to get to this point to propose or invite us to be creative and resourceful, but I think Mr. Townsend and others that represent downtown and all, every council member can come up with an immediate solution.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Dr. Wu.
Yes, good to see you again, by the way, and sorry you had to come down here, but I think it was important because now we know, you know, of the problem. A minute ago, when you were describing it, I laughed when you talked about getting the tickets. The reason I wanted to speak up, I was laughing because I understood my number of tickets is not quite as high as Councilman Hall, but it approaches that. It seems like every time I've been downtown, they've managed to find me and put a ticket on the car. So it was a laughter of agreement rather than a laughter of your misfortune.
I have thick skin, Councilman Wu. It didn't bother me at all.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, I was in the same boat. And so, and I remember, Ryan, counsel, that we were supposed to review this, I believe, after five years. I don't know when that comes back. Originally, it was supposed to be for a longer period, and I was one of the people that spoke up and wanted a shorter time period to look at what was going on.
Councilman Townsend, just for rec, I did call the DIB this morning at nine o'clock and left my concern, and I haven't received a phone call back yet, so just, I did go to them first. But I knew this meeting was today, and I wanted to get my two and a half cents in.
Mr. Gerald Solso has something he'd like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Peacock. Good to see you again.
Yes, sir, you too.
You know, we've heard a similar or the same complaint on numerous occasions, and I was under the impression that when we agreed to give, if you will, the parking responsibilities, the authority to collect the revenues that it generates, that we would have been done with it. I agree with your comment as it relates to if we are working diligently to attract businesses and business people to come to downtown, that this seems to be a thorn that we can easily remove. When we gave it, the parking responsibilities to the DIB, it was with the agreement that they would run it in such a way that complaints wouldn't continue to come back to us, because I don't think it's fair for us to have to referee what they're doing. If they don't know what they're doing, and then they have to come back to us on occasion, and we say, "Well, you got to do it this way or that way," it's almost as if we're dictating to them how to run the operation, and they have the responsibility for doing so. And if, in fact, we continue to get these kinds of complaints, it tells me that even the evaluation that you can do off the top of your head indicates to me that they have a problem with what they're doing. I'll go as far to say, it sounds as if they don't know what they're doing. And if they're going to continue to create problems, the city might want to consider taking it back and let someone run it that knows what they're doing. But for citizens to come down here on a, not a regular basis, but I've heard enough of those kinds of complaints, that it's a clear indication to me that there's some confusion about who is in charge over there, who's driving the bus. And if they're not going to drive the bus in the right direction, at the right speed, and be more considerate of citizens and others who are coming to downtown to try to help it grow, then that kind of activity will definitely, without a question, prevent, or at least hinder, what we're attempting to do with the downtown area. And I don't know what year we're in, and that was going to be my question, what year are we in with the parking, with the DIB, and what were the terms of the agreement if, in fact, we come to the point that we're not satisfied with their performance? What actions will we take? And we might want to look at the agreement and make sure that those kinds of things, from the amount that you play, and I understand that there's some talk about upgrading the parking meters with some more, that some that are more technology effective, but to have to go through this whenever there is a difference between citizens and parking and DIB, when there should be rules in place as if, you know, as when you said, you're doing some renovating, you had to get some heavy equipment in there, you need parking, the workers are going to need parking. And I don't think it's fair for us to have to referee and consider what they're doing. There needs to be a clear direction from the DIB in terms of what you're supposed to do and what you're not supposed to do. And then we would, you know, I could then sleep easy being assured that they're carrying out the duties as they relate to parking in an intelligent, effective fashion without citizens' complaints, though I know citizens will complain about 99 things on the board, but if this is something that can be solved, then, you know, I would expect for them to solve it and solve it quickly. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wallace, I've got your card up here, but what I'm going to do is just try to group these together. I've got two more on the parking issue, and then I'll call on you. Mr. Stephen Susner, is that right?
Yes, sir. I brought some show and tell for anybody if they want to look at it after the fact. It kind of illustrates my issue.
Okay. That'd be fine, sir. Thank you.
Well, I guess not only is it in the DIB's hands, they seem to have passed it on to a contractor that does not manage this process very well. I parked in a handicap spot while doing some volunteer time at the Cultural Center on the northwest corner of the Cultural Center. I don't know what that intersection is. I left some pictures here and notes on the ADA and the DOJ design regulations for handicap parking.
Mr. Susner, are you the guy with the Maserati or?
I wish.
Okay.
But I parked, I backed into that space, since somebody else was there, I waited in front and backed into it. And from the parking spot, there is no placard displaying that it is handicap space. I opened the door, there's no blue marking. From afar, you can see there's no blue anywhere on the space, and indeed, the marking is more than halfway behind the front of the parking space, and regulations clearly state that it needs to be visible by the driver in the parking, or in the driver's seat. And I'm the kind of guy that if I knew it was handicap parking, I certainly would not have parked there. So when I was told that somebody was writing me a ticket, and I came out and said, "I'm so sorry, this wasn't marked properly, I'll move my car," he said, "No, no, too late." Gave you my ticket. Fine, I'll fight it. This contractor has a rule in place that your fine doubles if you do not respond within 24 hours. So the next morning, I diligently took pictures and put together a letter of contest, and I mailed it at the post office, which is conveniently right next to my office on Palafax. And I got a letter back saying that I owed them 200 instead of $100, because not only have my fine doubled, but apparently the committee that they have to get together didn't decide on it. There wasn't even a decision of whether they had rejected it or accepted it, it just said, "You owe us $200 for this parking violation now." I would say it's nothing less than criminal for a private company to have the authority to double a fine. Say I was some young kid who got this on Tuesday, and he didn't get paid till Friday, and maybe that was half my whole paycheck. What do I do? And if you did want to contest it, there is no physical address, it's a post office box, there's nowhere where you can meet with this committee, they let you know by mail. And I think that it's something that maybe the city needs to consider, as in any other city I've lived in, having an office where you can confirm that you gave it to them on time, express your discontent with the violation, and work it out through the city that you love, not some company that's based in, you know, Provo, Utah, or wherever they are.
Well, one thing I think may not be immediate relief, and we have Ms. Dunlap here from the DIB Parking Committee, we've got Mr. Kimbrough in the back, he's going to be making a separate presentation to us. I don't have a specific recollection of who was on the city council at the time, but it seems like to me it was on the first city council that I sat on towards the end of that that we passed, the ability of DIB to manage the parking. And Dr. Wu's right, there's a five-year review, or Mr. Gerald's right, there's a five-year review, and if my timeline's right, here in about a year, year and a half, that'll come up. And I can tell you, there's people sitting here keeping count on that. Overall, I'm 85% not just pleased, but ecstatic about the job that DIB's done down around Palafax Place. As Mr. Spencer pointed out, when you get further east and west of there, their enthusiasm is a little less attractive, and so...
It's not the enthusiasms they have the issue with, it's the policy of the private contractor. It is the way that they go about enforcing these rules.
And that'll certainly be a factor. Right now, I'm not sure what authority the city's got. We've got the city attorney here, I can talk to him this week about that. I think our hands are, what we're able to do is limited until that five-year point comes up.
Well, I just want to make sure everyone knows when that time comes. Also, it's not clear to Joe Citizen or Stephen Citizen that this is in the hands of the DIB. As far as I knew, it was this ticket company and the city, and not until I went to the councilman whose district that that parking space was in did I find out not only about the DIB, but this would be the best place to speak about it.
Okay.
One...
Mr. Weiss wanted to say something.
Oh, go ahead.
You can finish.
Another, I was just going to say another thing, the parking garage in the county building. I paid $50 a month for parking in there and decided to stop paying for it because it is patrolled willy-nilly by some guy that cruises around in a truck whenever he wants. The elevator is turned off during county holidays, so the rest of us in private businesses have to, I know I probably should, but have to truck up those stairs to get to their car. If you're not a county employee, you must park on the top and second-to-top floors. So...
Mr. Weiss.
Not cool, as the kids would say.
Although your issue did not originate in my district, I believe you're a constituent of mine.
Yes, I am.
And I wanted to share with you my efforts, if I could have some time to meet with you.
Sure.
Another constituent did a great deal of research on this because of a ticket, and being able to contest it and then pay it, and have that not be in the hands of the DIB. And it was determined that this would go to the county, that that's where you would actually pay your ticket and contest, because to be writing the ticket, collecting, and then hearing appeals, that's, you can't be doing all three things.
Sure.
So there's the question of, I was not on council when this was passed, but I asked the simple question of, "Well, why do you do it that way?" The comment was, "Well, the city was doing it that way before we started doing it." So it's not really the DIB that created this de facto situation, and they inherited it from, I think, the city manager, I don't know how it was all done, but it doesn't make sense. There's a lot of issues that I'd like to share with you on that, so you can understand, you know, my concerns are how we allow people to appeal an issue because something like this happens. I've asked that question, too. There's some blue meters in front of the chamber that look like they're handicapped. I never parked there just in case, but they're not marked, they're not, they're just, the meters are painted blue. So is that intended because it's right in front of the building to be handicapped? This was intended to be a space but wasn't marked properly? And how you, as a citizen, can know, you know, what your recourse is or how you can resolve the situation? So I'd like to share that with you. Not today, it would take at least an hour or so. I'd like to take some time and share that with you.
Also, on the city's part, if somebody could have a look at that parking space, I mean, it's almost as if someone said, "Hey, there's no parking, handicap parking here. I don't know, throw a sign over there." And it doesn't make it fair when it's the one spot that is actually accessible to that building. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. President.
Yes, Dr. Wu. You had mentioned the parking garage. I'm also on the Florida-Alabama TPO, and we flip our meetings between the Escamie County Courthouse and the Santa Rosa County Commission. And I was going to a meeting, there was nothing available on the first floor, so I parked and went into the meeting. That's when I found out also that I am free to park on the first floor, on the very top, and I had learned because they put a ticket on the car in the interim. I was really steaming, and then Commissioner Robinson told me that he has gotten tickets, and that is his garage. Commissioner Valentino told me he's gotten tickets, and that's his garage. Turns out that almost all the commissioners have been equally ticketed. So if you're steamed, you're not alone.
Thank you.
So we join you in equally being ticketed.
And if I remember correctly, the only signage that says, "Non-county employees park fifth floor and above," are posted on the fifth floor.
Thank you, because I had no idea, and there was no signs. Thank you. You just helped me out, because I couldn't figure out. You know, I have a sticker on my car, but when I got into politics, I said that I would never park that car anywhere that no one else could park their car, because the fastest way, I think, to get thrown out of office is to do things that other people can't do. But on the other hand, like you said, if there's no signs except on the fifth floor that says you can't park except on the fifth floor, how in the world are you going to know that until you get a ticket? So, and as I learned. Thank you.
Ms. Dunlap. Now, you're all...
I'm not speaking as a DIB.
Okay. I, you're always welcome down here, and you're delighted to have sitting out there in the audience. We spent almost a half hour on this, something that city council can't take care of right away, so...
That is true.
Okay.
That is true. I just simply wanted to say, as a citizen, if anyone who has invested in downtown needs to get a special parking dispensation so that they can park anywhere, or that they can park in front of their building, I should get the first one. can park in front of their building, I should get the first one.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Wallace.
Good evening. My name is Walter Wallace, and I'm president of Woodland Heights, Neighborhood Association, also vice president and the council neighborhood president. Today, I just want to say to the council and to the mayor, the resident of Woodland Heights and the citizen of Pensacola, we want to thank you for all the support and all these years that y'all have supported building that community center in Pensacola. I have got the knowledge that we have got the architect, so we're ready to go, but I just want to let you know how this center, hopefully, will bring more people into the city and be a place where we know that it's going to be a shining star and a new beginning for building community center. Because we asked you, and we told you before, we hopefully, this center would be out of the box, something more odd and cultural, something where we can give our children another atmosphere, another learning experience. And I felt so good this morning, I was talking to two Washington High students, and they're so eager to sit down with us and develop this center. And I just want to thank the council and the mayor for y'all's continued support all these years, and hopefully, we all can have a good time at the Woodland Heights meeting in the center. And I'm so proud of some of the, for those, and I think those over the years that came up to the neighborhood, and I'm escalated, and I'm thankful a couple of the architects can come by and we'll meet with some more, and they just came wait to put something on that beautiful Highland Park area. If anybody ever been there, you know we've got a beautiful piece of area, so we just want to enhance it and have a showcase where people can say, "This is where I want to come to live in Pensacola." And also, I just want to speak of one other issue that, as times and things changes, policy, laws, and procedures have to change. And I think the council needs to look hard at a curfew. As I said before, I remember the times when I was a kid, I stayed up on Emin Law Street. I can walk from Emin Law Street down to Ed, William Library on E and Gonzales. Now I take my grandson to the store, I watch him, I don't let him out of my sight, and things done changed. So I think the council need to look at, but really seriously look at a curfew law. So I thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to thank Mr. Wallace for coming down and sharing his concerns and his interests with us. And as some of you may or may not know, Mr. Wallace has been heading up the Neighborhood Association for many years, and has worked diligently with me since the day we agreed, based on a neighborhood meeting, that we agreed that we did want a community center in that area. The location for that center was, the decision was made by the residents of the community, not a bunch of outsiders. And therefore, I want to thank Mr. Wallace for coming down to mention it, and I'm looking forward. I spoke to Ashton Hay with the mayor on the day of the MLK parade, and we're looking forward to getting together to set the, to have a brief, short groundbreaking ceremony to let the citizens know what we're doing, and what the city is doing, and hopefully everything will be done this side of, say, mid-February. But I'm waiting for a call back from the mayor as to when the groundbreaking ceremony will be, but I want to congratulate Mr. Wallace and the citizens of District Five, who have worked very, very hard to make this idea come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to follow along and thank Mr. Wallace for coming down as well. I know how passionate he is about the community center, and he mentioned that the architects had visited, and I just wanted to make sure that the mayor's office was also working on. I know it's going to be a LEED-certified building, but that we'd look at geothermal and solar, and possibly capturing rainwater and that sort of thing. I know that when I came on council, Dr. Wu, the first time we talked about approving a bid, spoke up and said, "No longer is it going to be the lowest bid, we need to look at renewable options, capturing the opportunity for having something that is, has less waste, uses less electricity, and that we design our buildings," because it's hard to retrofit what we have, and a lot of our city is built out, and a lot of our infrastructure for the public spaces are built out, but when we're doing that, to make sure we're working on the, with the architects on geothermal...
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, that's one comment I want to make. We are adamant about doing that, especially, we have some beautiful trees out in that park, we will be doing everything we can to preserve that area, and to be able to not only build what we got now, we hopefully will be able to design it, so when money come available, we can be, have some expansion and everything else, so...
Because solar, if you just plum-pore it with the piping, you may not have, we may not have money for solar at this point, but, I mean, Councilman Spencer would know that if you at least start with that, so you can install it at a later date, if we get grant funding, or if we lease the space to a solar company. But to be smart about how we're building these new community centers, and I know, I think that the both are going to be kind of the same design, so...
No, oh, I...
...fits together on those.
Well, I don't know about that, because what I'm thinking, what we're saying, that the group of people that are going to sit down and design ours might not be the same group that does the other center. But hopefully, it would be a new beginning on building community center. I think that we need to get out the box about how we build our center. And I have been to other cities, and there's other programs, and I guess I'm so passionate about bringing a little odd and cultural into the neighborhood and give the kids another opportunity to do other things in life. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to reinforce the fact that, yes, these will be LEED-certified buildings. And also, one of the other things that we're looking at is that, you know, knowing that we own a natural gas company, we will have natural gas in these buildings, but we're also going to take a look at it from an educational perspective on natural gas, and actually have cutaways, so people can see how the natural gas is being used in the buildings. I don't know if you've ever been out, members of the public probably haven't, out to the ESP facility where they're headquartered, and they actually have an incredible display on how natural gas works, with everything being labeled in their particular building. And so, we're very committed into bringing that forward as well, and looking at all options for a very clean and renewable building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you're up again, Mr. Reynolds, Mayor Communications and Actions. Item number one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number one is Award of Bid: Improvements and Upgrades to Exchange Park Sports Complex. The recommendation is that City Council Award Bid Number 12-003 for improvements and upgrades to the Exchange Park Sports Complex to Tehera and Cronly General Contractor Incorporated, the lowest and most responsible bidder, with a base bid and selected alternates in the amount of $347,003,050.
Committee.
Move the approval.
There's a motion, we need a second, got a second discussion. Okay, Mr. Townsend.
I'd just like to ask, were there any items that are going to be delayed as a result of those that we've already agreed upon that have not, any action has started on those, will this delay any of the other activities that we've identified to start?
The answer to that question, Councilman Townsend, is no, but Mr. David Flaherty is here, he can give you more detail if you'd like.
I think he might know specifically, a couple of ones that I'm talking about, I'm seeing not one iota of anything happening in that regard, I haven't gotten any information regarding a couple of items in District Seven, and just wondering whether that's causing any adverse impact on any of the items in District Seven.
Thank you, sir. I kind of missed your question, I was running down the elevator, or taking the elevator to get here, but I think you're referring to the tennis courts...
You know what I'm talking about.
...at Armstrong Park, yes. We, good news, the contractor has consented to hold his prices, there was a lag time there. Originally, the bids that came in weren't, we didn't have enough funding. Through your efforts, the county stepped up to the plate, provided additional funding, and so we've got enough to do the two tennis courts. We went back to the contractor, he's going to hold firm on his bid prices, we're going to have a contract circulating through the mayor's office by the end of the week, and we'll probably have those courts done. I'm not quite sure, I think I told you June, but I think it's going to be April, so...
Let me further expound on this. Just so my fellow council members know that I did, in fact, go out and do a treasure hunt to secure some money to help out on one of the projects that had been identified in District Seven, and it was to the tune of $50,000 that we graciously received from the county. Similar to the kind of action that took place at Roger Scott Tennis, which I was delighted that I could get.
Absolutely.
So I was hoping that I could see something moving pretty quickly, inasmuch as I did the treasure hunt and got the money.
Yes, sir, and I, we really appreciate that. Our question was whether the contractor could hold his prices, because initially, when you get a bid, the prices are good for 30 days. We're well beyond that, but the good news is, he's going to hold his price, and we're going to be able to get this project done.
Okay, and the other thing is, Exchange Park is a beautiful facility, and I know that there are some expected plans of having various tournaments, national tournaments, and those kinds of things. We want it to be a showcase of the city of Pensacola when folks come here and spend a lot of money, and it causes a ripple effect in terms of bringing the economic impact in here. However, I would like to see some, some kind of parks like that on the west side sometimes, so I would suspect that inasmuch as we have approved the Legion Field Complex, that I have not seen not one iota of date thrown in that direction, or I don't even know the results of any, any kind of meetings, architectural meetings for the building, and anything that. I've heard through the grapevine that there have been some talks regarding that particular building over there, but I would hope that we give the same kind of attention to those kinds of things and get it moving before I pass away.
Yes, sir, and, and... Mr. City Administrator, if I may, the, both the Woodland Heights New Resource Center and the Legion Field New Resource Center are on your February, your first meeting in February for your review.
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
If I may, Councilman, and recognizing that we need to inform the whole council as a whole in regards to those, that decision-making process, and making sure that we have completed our due diligence through that process. We had initially tried to get it in January, but unfortunately, could not make that happen. But we will have that report available for you in the first meeting in February.
And it's no fun for me to have to come here and sit and say the kind of comments that I just stated, and hopefully it didn't take offense to them, but it gets irritated when I see those kinds of things going, and I know there's been some things pending for so long, and I haven't seen anything happen. So I don't mean anything personal, but that's what I think my role is, to ensure that if I know that we've got something going, that we need to get it going.
Absolutely.
Mr. Townsend.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure that I understood you. You're saying that these courts will be done in April of 2012, that they will be... Okay.
Yes, sir, that's the timeframe I've been given by the Engineering Department, they handle our projects now.
Okay, great. You know, I just want to also acknowledge the fact that I've been on council over three years now, and that I've consistently hear Councilman Townsend talk about this project, and it's just so good to see that his advocacy for this project is now happening. And one of these days, maybe we should name those the Ronald Townsend Tennis Court, similar to what we have over at Roger Scott. Name these after Mr. Townsend, thank you.
I second that.
Won't nobody play there, I'd decline.[1426.01][1426.01](Laughter).
Okay. Anybody else on the committee? Mr. Weiss.
I just had one quick statement to make, that I will support this today, because we've already actually approved that we will be doing it, but my concern when moving these funds forward from 2014 is for Fire Station Three. It is in serious disrepair and has mold issues, and there's an engineering study being completed, and there will be funding needed for that. I went on my own scavenger hunt and looked through what we had left, and urged council to listen to my concerns on that, so I've been assured that they'll find the dollars once they know what the dollars are for Station Three. So I'm supporting it, because we've already moved on from that.
Station Three is your Legion Field, right? Yes, pretty much, yeah.
I guess so.
Yeah. Anybody from the audience? Okay? All in favor? Aye. Or opposed? I pass this unanimously. Item number two, sir.
Mr. President, the second item on the agenda is creating Section 8, Tac 1, Tac 24 of the City Code, creating fines for excessive code violations. The recommendation is that City Council create Section 8, Tac 1, Tac 24 of the City Code to provide fines for persons who generate more than four code violations in a calendar year.
Move the approval. Second. Motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, this sounds like it has merit. I was hoping that maybe in a year's time, we can revisit, just to have an update on the success. We so often hear of $100,000 fines that we're waiving down to, you know, $500 staff time, and so I have a concern, I just don't know exactly how this will play out, and I'd just like to make sure that we revisit it in a year, just have an update, because I don't want it to be that we just continually rack up ridiculous, unpayable fines that are just on paper. Thanks.
Mr. Reynolds, first, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Absolutely, I think that's incredibly important. This is yet another part of the overall initiatives that we're bringing forward when it comes to cleaning up the city. And Councilwoman Pratt, you absolutely are correct when you say that we have all these fines on the book and nothing ever happens with them. We are in the process of dealing with that particular issue, and in fact, we had a meeting this morning specifically outlining how we're going to bring foreclosure process forward, which the city has never done, for properties that are problem properties, if you will. And we certainly want to ensure that we have the ability, and part of the meeting today was to figure out what that process is, since we've never done it before, but we think that this is a very important piece to the overall puzzle of how we continue to ensure that the city is clean and held in such a manner that when people come here, they want to actually be here.
Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, this is going to have a tremendous impact on District Seven, recognizing there are a considerable number of ill-kept properties in District Seven, for whatever reason. The concern that I have, I want to support it, but the concern that I have is whether we're doing an overkill here. This is not substituting for any of the actions that we do currently have, I don't think. Right now, we send letters, we do lien on property, we fine $150, $250 a day. Now we're going a step farther, if in fact, we warn individuals four times during a calendar year, they will get an extra $150. I think this is what this is calling for. Is it because our personnel is overworked, and we don't have the personnel to do what they should be doing in terms of inspecting and/or looking at that? I'd just like to know maybe the rationale as to why, because I thought we had a considerable number of things in place that could take care of this, but obviously, we aren't, since we want to do an additional fine. And folks can stand so many fines, just got there talking about fines in another area, and now we're talking about fines in another area. I'm all for having cleanliness and demolishing old buildings, and I'm not talking from that stance, but I'm talking from a stance of being, having some, maybe some common sense, not saying these folks don't have common sense, in terms of the expectations of whether we're going to be able to even enforce this particular document.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Townsend, and Mr. Steve Wineke is here and will address them at this point.
I hope that's not from an angry property owner.
Not at all. I won't tell you what, I told Mr. Reynolds it was from. Members of council, that's a very good question, in fact, a citizen contacted me this week. This ordinance is simply another tool. You know, it's not going to be effective on a property where, okay, Mr. Townsend, we've cited you, and you're receiving a $150 a day fine, it's not aimed towards that, it's geared more for people where the city is basically the property manager. And I'll give you an example. I was contacted several months ago by a property owner, and the individual owns numerous properties throughout the city, and they're out-of-state property owners, and they generally take care of their property... care of their property owners when we give them a notice of violation. Well, they were upset because we had to take a bait of action on their property, and they received a bill, and they were like, well, you know, why, why is the city sending me a bill? Well, we had to clean your property. And, and I, and I asked the property owner, I said, "Well, I, I have a question for you, if you don't mind me asking. Do you own property other than in Pensacola?" And she says, she, the citizen said, "Yes." Said, "Well, where you live now, you know, it's, it's not in Florida. Do, do you wait for, you know, your local code enforcement agency or police department to tell you to cut your property or maintain them?" "Well, no, I live here." So, "Well, ma'am, you know, there's, what do you think of the property owners that are living next door to your properties in Pensacola?" It's more tor, it's, it's geared, this ordinance is geared more towards the people that cons, that, that come in compliance, but the city, i.e. code enforcement, is, we're the property managers. We gotta send them a notice of violation. We have to inspect their property every month. You know, it doesn't take a brain surgeon to realize, in Florida, grass grows. So, you need to be maintaining your property on a regular basis, especially when it comes to overgrowth. You shouldn't have to wait for a government agency to send you a notice every three weeks to say, "Cut your grass." And this is aimed more towards that, where people, you know, if they cut their grass, the city constantly, you know, we're, we just constantly send a notice of violations to the same people, and they bring it into compliance, so there's no punitive action ever taken. Well, there needs to be punitive action for people that we have to constantly tell, "Cut your grass," or, you know, "Clean up the garbage on your property." It's not geared towards the ones that are, you know, receiving a heavy fine. I hope that clarifies it a little.
Thank you, Steve. That does give more clarification to me. Additionally, um, I think maybe, uh, the rationale that Congresswoman Pratt, uh, indicated that we need to look at it, you know, a year or two, just to determine the impact of it, and I will-
And, and we'll be in issue at all. I, I can follow up on that, no problem.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Spencer, then Mr. Geraldson.
Thanks. I support this action, um, wholeheartedly, and appreciate the further explanation. I just want to share with everyone what was valuable. There were many valuable things that occurred during campaigning, but one of the things that was the most rewarding and enlightening for me was walking door to door and hearing from people who were, were definitely, um, they, they were on constrained or very limited incomes. Um, and I was in areas that we are concerned about people's safety, some of those neighborhoods. But it was very interesting how many of those individuals during the campaign asked, "What could the council do? What could the city do to enforce the, basically, the misconduct and, um, misconduct of others, those that do not take care of their properties?" And, you know, there, there is a ninety-five-year-old woman on North Haynes that, that called me and asked what I could do about a neighbor, neighboring property, that was doing exactly what Steve mentioned, just never maintaining it. And, um, so let's remember, there are, there are people with a tremendous amount of pride, with very limited resources, and I feel that this action, um, helps to uphold their dedication and commitment in spite of their limited resources, and presenting, um, a better community.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Geraldson?
Thank you, Mr. President. And it all sounds good. Sounds reasonable. But my concern is, what do we do, and for the very reasons Mr. Spencer just mentioned, limited con, limited income, out-of-town owners? What I'd need to know, what I'd like to hear is, what do we do when they cannot pay, or as they have historically ignored us and do not pay? Are we going to do anything else? Do we sit again and reconsider and become sensitive? Do we sit around again and reconsider reducing fines? It's good to put this in place, but if we're not going to do it without sitting around haggling over whether or not we should reduce the fine, or, 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 what do you call it, forgive a fine, what are we going to do when they don't cooperate? What's the next step for us? Will it be in the hands of the magistrate, or what do we do next? Because if we're going to sit around and consider, "Well, we'll reduce the fine if they go get an attorney and come in and say, 'Can you reduce the fine over here on this and do it on that,'" we're strengthening and creating fines for excessive code violations. But what do we do when either they do not apply, uh, reply, or cannot reply? Then what do we do, too? Can anyone tell me that?
In this particular instance, Councilman Gerald, on this ordinance, they have an appellate right like any code violation, and it is to the special magistrate, but the special magistrate's ruling is final on this particular violation of this ordinance. Now, in regards to the overall picture, and, and we've discussed this in the past, I, I think you're seeing a change in times, and I'm gonna be doing a brief presentation to council and, and addressing the very issues you've brought up. The city has, was stagnant for several years in regards to, you would reach a plateau like fines, and, and, you know, what's the city gonna do? And a lot of it had to do, you know, we had a new charter coming aboard, then we, the charter was passed, and a new mayor was coming aboard. In the past administration, basically, just took a timeout until everything was in place. This administration, the new mayor and the council's been, you know, totally supportive on tougher codes, on, on getting tougher on this. I think you're gonna see the city moving forward like, like we've never done in the past on stuff. Individual cases that are sitting for years on end with nothing being done, I think you're gonna see a, a change in that.
Well, I would certainly like to. Thank you.
City Attorney would like to speak.
And, and I'll defer to, uh, Mr. Reynolds for a follow-up. Um, but really and truly, if we need to sort of cut through the bureaucracy, the city's been stagnant for decades on this issue. Um, so, in answer to Councilman Gerald's, uh, at this meeting that we had this morning, uh, and, and again, I defer to Mr. Reynolds, my understanding is that, at least by this time next year, uh, we're gonna have a policy in place that addresses these issues. For example, I'm looking forward to, uh, with your consent, filing the first foreclosure action, hopefully by the end of this year, uh, I mean, by the end of this month, uh, or, or no later than the middle of next month, on a property that, that's accumulated tens of thousands of dollars of fines. Um, that's one thing that's gonna happen. This has simply never been done in the history of the city before, so we'll see, uh, how it turns out. Uh, the second thing we're gonna have to come to grips with on, on a policy, uh, level, which is why I defer to Mr. Reynolds, is it clearly, as Councilwoman Pratt said, that no one in their right mind is gonna pay the city a hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars for liens. I mean, at some point, uh, we're gonna have to establish a cap where we either forgive the fine, walk away and say that the cost of enforcement is less than, uh, what we're receiving in a tax base, or we're gonna have to contract these cases out to, to what in essence is a collection agency for foreclosure cases that run these cases through in a very economical way, and you sort of get pennies on the dollar, but you do what you can do. Or, we're gonna have to have a forgiveness policy that we work with in conjunction with the magistrate. Now, all that's gonna have to be set down in this policy, um, and, and we're gonna have to come to grips with how we have to handle it, because obviously, then, you know, we need to treat everybody alike here, and we can't be singling out people or districts or, or houses. But I think the first, um, level of commitment by the city, and the first signal that we're serious, will be this foreclosure action. And, we're not gonna run out willy-nilly and just start foreclosing on properties, because it, it's, the process itself is not particularly compi, complicated, but the policy-driven decisions behind it are. For example, we certainly don't wanna foreclose on a vacant piece of property that, you know, it, it, we have vacant properties already that we don't know what to do with. We wanna make sure that when we do bring these actions, that the person who owns the property's gonna have the ability to pay, where the property justifies the, the legal action. Um, so I guess my report to you is that hopefully, that policy will be in place sooner than later, but in the interim, uh, the city's gonna go forward and foreclose on selected properties that, in our collective opinion, uh, are either so heinous, so, such a, a sore thumb that we need to take action, or, uh, along with that, the property has a value that justifies the amount of money we're gonna have to spend in the foreclosure action.
Mr. Reynolds?
And just to put a, a fun point on it, Mr. President, uh, again, that's exactly where we ultimately are headed, and this foreclosure action is our first steps with training wheels on, if you will, as we begin to move that process forward. And Mr. Wineke will have his presentation. Steve, I believe it's the first, first meeting in February, correct? Is that what I slated?
We signed it up.
Yeah, okay, so you'll have that overall, uh, review of what Steve has been up to in the first, uh, meeting in February.
Well, I'm gonna close this, this discussion up here on, on committee. Anyway, I, I just wanted to address what Mr. Gerald said. This, it's my, my understanding of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wineke, is this is not for the person that's been accumulating fines for a year, year and a half, because clearly, fines aren't a deterrent to them, whether it's an extra hundred and fifty dollars or not. These are for the repeat offenders. You go out there on February, they, 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 they correct it. They go out on April, they correct it, and, and that on the fifth time, you have to go out there, is when they get the additional hundred and fifty dollar fine.
That is correct. And, and there's a lot of, you know, people don't realize, just for an overgrown property case, we have to send an officer out there, we have to pull the property tax records, we have to do a lis pendens on the property, we have to send a notice of violation of the property owner, we have to re-inspect the property, and if it's cut, we start it all over two and a half weeks later in the summer months, you know, if they don't. That's what this is aimed at, is for people that do come in compliance generally, but, you know, because there's no penalty. You know, we're, we, the city are their property managers.
Right, right to that. Okay, anybody in the audience? Okay, Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, it appears that right now, some of the, um, enforcement cases are taking sometimes two, three, four months to even be heard. So, if four times a year have to be accumulated before this would fall into place, is there a mechanism in place to increase the speed with which enforcement hearings are occurring, so that you can legitimately even have a calendar that would work with this? Because I've been watching some cases, you know, since October, that have not been able to be put on the, the calendar. And so, if you multiply it by four, it would take over a year. So, it seems like it might end up being a moot, um, law. And the second thing is, as you were having your conversation, you were talking about it having to be large enough to justify the investment, and that we didn't want a bunch of empty properties. And I would suggest to you that even a small case that was appropriately handled would be a detriment to other small cases, and the city would then have the asset of that property instead of the liability of that property bringing down the neighboring, um, property. So, if you would look at this as how the small and large pieces affect the neighborhood properties, as opposed to, does it give you more to have to handle or not? I mean, you can always sell it once you get title to it, if you don't wanna deal with it. But I am concerned about the calendar issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Item number three, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Subject is Consent Approval by the City of Southern Company Services Incorporated Sublease Agreement. The recommendation is that City Council authorize the mayor to execute written consent allowing Southern Company Services Incorporated to sublease to Hello Works Incorporated its leased premises as provided under its lease agreement with the city of Pensacola.
Moved to approve.
Second? Motion and second. Discussion for the committee, from the audience. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. I'm just wondering, did there need for this runout in June of eighty-eight, you know, the claim? Never mind, that's tech. Uh, okay. Bad, bad, bad. All right, Mr. Attorney. Lease Extension Agreement for Port Royal, Phase Two.
Uh, the recommendation is that the City Council approve the second lease extension agreement between City, Subleasee, and S.I.N.E. of Subleasee of vacant property in the Port Royal Phase Two development, providing for an extension of time for construction of residence and consideration of payment of, of an ad valorem tax equivalent for improved property. To make a long story short, what this does is give the purchaser additional time to construct a residence in exchange for that purchaser, uh, bringing up-to-date the taxes for two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and prorated two thousand and twelve, which is gonna amount to about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and without, you know, boring you with the details, which sometimes even I don't understand, that, that just hadn't been done for a while. Uh, so one of the things that hopefully will do a better job of monitoring in the future is the collection of these fees. Uh, these fees will be transmitted at closing, uh, to either my office or to the, uh, finance office.
Mr. Weiss?
I'd like to get some more details on this. Um, you know, the, the build-out on Port Royal has been very long, and there's phases to this, but I'd like to know, is this a transfer of the property to Mr. Dickerson, or has he had this property in his possession and, um, not built on?
Uh, it's a transfer, ma'am.
So, he's purchasing a property that was not built on, and you will be collecting the fees-
On behalf of the city.
Retroactively?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Which is really the only way to get it done but for litigation, which is probably-
It has to be sold for them-
Yes, ma'am.
-for us to collect, because they're not paying it. Okay.
Thank you. And, um, if, in fact, construction, uh, has not taken place by December of this year, uh, we will have to revert back, it'll be revoked the lease, and we'll have to revert back anything that needs to-
Yeah, my, my guess, Councilman, is that they'll come back and ask for another extension, in which case we'll collect the rest of the prorated taxes and the advance on the next year, and, and it'll simply go on and on until someone either builds there, uh, or we make a decision on what to do with the master leaseholder.
Okay, because I read it, uh, thinking and under the impression that there was good intentions of constructing something right now. Uh, maybe I read it wrong.
Well, I, I, I have no information to believe that there aren't good intentions. I just find it difficult to believe that it can be struck, constructed in the length of time that we're extending it. But who knows? I could be wrong. I'm not the construction guy.
Thank you.
Mr. Spencer?
Um, it's my understanding, and maybe, um, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, Mr. President, that, uh, Mr. Messer can tell us, this has been done before in the Port Royal Phase Two? At, I-
The, the difference is that this is one of the issues that was put on my agenda as sort of a watch list, and the extensions have been done before, but this is the first time we're gonna get the money. I mean, I'm taking the position that, for example, when these leases and subleases are renegotiated or extended, that my job is to get the money into the city, as well as take a look at the leases. So, we're just gonna try and do a better job of that, and this is the first effort.
Right, thank you. And because of that, I, I, I support it. I think that he's actually, um, put more teeth into this, but at the same time, it's, it's not hampering or hamstringing the new property owner from moving forward, getting property on the tax rolls, and, um, putting more twenty-four-hour residents downtown.
He may hit me up over the head for putting him on the spot, but do you have any answer to that, Mr. Lozier, of the, the history of this being done before? No?
No, I do not.
Okay, okay.
Good try.
Okay.
Yeah, he's like that.
Yeah. Any, any, anybody else from the committee, the audience?
Didn't have, didn't-
I would need a motion. Uh-
Move or approve.
Got a motion here?
Second.
Dr. Pratt, you're looking.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just looking.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. If the members of the D.I.B. would join us now, we've got a verbal update from them, and I, I'm not going to restrict, um, the committee's inquiry, um, into this, this, this update, but I did have a request from Mr. Kimbrough, that he was told that there would be, like, a couple of issues that specifically that we were interested in, the city was interested in, and that's really all he's prepared to speak to today. But you got the, the hired staff and, and the, the elected staff, um, here. Between them all, they- Thank you.
That's all right. Don't worry.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough. Would you introduce your board, please?
Yes. To my immediate left is the, well, let me start again. Deborah Dunlap, who is a member of the Parking and Traffic Committee. To her right is Bernie Merrill, the chairman of the Downtown Improvement Board. To his right is Dan Lozier, the general counsel for the Downtown Improvement Board. And to my right is Mark Bednar, the chairman of the Downtown, I mean, of the Park, Downtown Parking and Traffic Committee.
Thank you.
We appreciate this opportunity. I gave you some collateral material that, kind of a quick, skinny, if you will, that speaks to kind of what the Parking Management District has accomplished. I want to start first, because, and it's in that order in the packet, with the issue of the pay stations. First and foremost, I had a conversation with a fellow from the Parking Authority in Miami the other day, and his response was, "You guys sure do do it differently in Pensacola." He said, "I don't understand why y'all aren't concerned about revenue, and you aren't concerned about some of the controls that the rest of us in the state are that manage the parking." And I explained to him that our focus is really on using the parking, which is a public asset, to leverage as an economic development tool, which will encourage additional use, activity, and investment in the downtown. And in dense downtowns, where you have, where the buildings are in close proximity, and you have multiple tenants in the same building, and you have a very limited linear street front in front of those buildings, it's absolutely a necessity that you manage those public assets. And that's the approach that the DIB has consistently taken, both in the two-year process with the planning back in '06 and '07, and then ultimately with the implementation and the start of the Parking Management District in early '08. We think it's a pretty exciting addition to the Parking Management District, and that is the introduction of pay stations. These are, they're currently used, and there's a picture of them on your second, third page. Actually, what, if you don't, if you're not familiar, I'm sure you've seen them in other cities. There are currently 53 other Florida jurisdictions that use pay stations to regulate their curbside parking throughout the state. The ones that the DIB has selected for downtown Pensacola are identical to the ones that are used in downtown New Orleans today and have been since Hurricane Katrina. They're solar-powered, they're wireless. They ultimately solve a problem for us in regards to the old mechanical meters. I have to back up a second and tell you, there's two kinds of meters in downtown currently. There are mechanical meters, and they're just like what they say, they have moving parts inside, metal against metal, and they rub and get thin, and they break and wear out, literally. And then there are electronic meters. The mechanical meters were put in place in the 1950s and the 1960s, and we've been scabbing them together since then. We average, that was true through September of last year, I don't know how the numbers have changed since, but at that time, we were averaging eight to 10 mechanical meters a month that were failing. And when the parts break, as you might imagine, the manufacturer that stopped making those in 1977. So it's a real challenge to keep those continuing to work. The electronic meters were added by the city to supplement that same problem with the mechanical meters in the early to mid 1990s. We have almost equal numbers of mechanical meters and electronic meters throughout the downtown area. They're not exclusively on certain streets, they're intermingled. The pay stations are proposed for the current paid, time-restricted parking along South Jefferson, a portion of Government Street, and South Bayland Street. There will be, no additional spaces will be metered, with the exception of three spaces on Bayland near Garden that are currently very difficult to enforce because they're currently in an island, if you will, surrounded by metered spaces. And because of the routes with the enforcement officers, those are almost impossible to regulate. And so as a result, they're taken out of the inventory that's available to customers and clients that are in the downtown. But these are not going to cover any areas that are currently free spaces, except for those three spaces I mentioned on Bayland. They will just allow us to take the old mechanical meters finally out of service and stop the frustration that the users of downtown continue to have with those meters. If you recall, the old mechanical meters are the reason why we only take, can only take quarters for our meters, for parking, because the mechanisms broke long ago that allowed us to take nickels and dimes. So this solves that problem, and it brings us into the 21st century. We'll be one of the earlier cities in this part of the Panhandle to have the pay stations. The pay stations that have been selected accept every American coin, except pennies. It'll take pennies, it just won't register. But they take every American coin. They also take credit cards. And those credit cards obviously are, they take all kinds of credit cards, four or five different kinds, all the major ones, MasterCard, Visa, Discovery, Discover. The pay stations will allow us to purchase, will allow users to purchase parking in increments of six minutes, where right now, your only choice is to purchase in increments of one hour or two hour. So effectively, you'll be able to buy six minutes for a nickel. The world will be very different. It also will allow those same spaces along those streets that I just identified to purchase up to five hours at a time, if you so choose, or any increment between that, six minutes, five hours. The other big advantage of the pay stations is that they're going to use a pay-and-display technology, which essentially means, if you've used these in other cities, they print you out a receipt which has an adhesive on it, and you stick it to either the inside of your windshield or your driver's side window on the inside, has an expiration date time on it. And as long as that time has not expired, you can leave it on your vehicle, and you can go to any other metered space within the downtown area and continue to park for free. You don't have to leave the time you've paid for on the meter and drive away, like you do now. So again, it's another huge advantage to going to this new technology. Additionally, this will allow us to reprogram the mid-1990 electronic meters to, again, take nickels and dimes, because they've always been able to do that. But the city made the decision before we assumed the Parking Management District that it would be easier for the public to have one choice, and that one choice was quarters. So we're, have already engaged a firm that will come in and reprogram those old electronic meters to take nickels and dimes. And so you'll be, not only be able to pay in smaller increments, you'll be able to buy smaller increments of parking in those same areas where those meters currently exist. As I mentioned earlier, all curbside areas that are now free will remain free, except for the three spaces on Bayland. The cost for adding these conveniences will be borne by changing the fee for an hour of parking by 25 cents. In your packet is an analysis of the cities that we use, that we collectively use as a community to compare ourselves to, or that we attempt to emulate in many differing ways. From our analysis of cities across Florida that are of the size of Pensacola or larger, there is nobody that still does parking for 25 cents an hour. This is only being necessitated to pay for the pay stations, because obviously, they're not inexpensive. Our intention is that the installation will start on or about the 20th of February. It should be completed approximately at the end of February. There'll be a sizable educational period after that, where there will be an awful lot, be folks on the curb, there'll be brochures in businesses, flyers, and I've given you a copy of the prototype of that, as well as in the public buildings and the major attractions. We will have parking ambassadors working the sidewalks during the normal business hours, Monday through Friday, helping people that aren't familiar with the pay stations understand how to use them and the options and the benefits. Ultimately, this is about regulating turnover and access for our customers and our clients to keep the momentum going in downtown. Close-in parking in most cities, near places where people want to go the most, is usually the most regulated and the highest cost. There'll be no changes to Palafox Street of any kind associated with this. This is really dealing with the streets, one street, street off of Palafox and Government Street, where many of our employees are now trying to park, as well as many of our customers as our occupancy rate has decreased. I'll move on now to the back-end angled parking, and again, there's plenty of collateral in that.
Mr. Reese.
I'm sorry, I just had a quick question. If I don't ask it now, I'll forget. What is the situation with baseball games? Because they're three hours or more usually, or is there going to be no patrolling during baseball games?
After 5:00 p.m., there's, none of the curbside is posted anyway, is reported. And on weekends, that's not the case either. No, ma'am.
Wonderful.
Now, we're working closely with the Wahoos on parking plans.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Townsend.
Yes, thank you very much. I was wondering, who will own these machines?
The Downtown Parking Management District, which is really the DIB.
Thank you.
Mr. Kimbrough.
All right, I'm going to switch gears now, and there's a colored sheet of paper that separates the two types of material that were in your packet. Pay stations were first, and the back-end angled parking is next. We were asked to address this, and I would suggest to you that, again, this decision was made after much consultation to address what we viewed as a significant economic development flaw in terms of redeveloping and reusing North Palafox Street. The area between Government and Wright Street had, prior to the installation of the back-end angled parking, had over 80,000 square feet of empty, underutilized, existing commercial space. That empty commercial space had been vacant, on average, more than four years and two months. That was an average, which is, in our minds, absolutely unacceptable for income-producing property that ought to be generating jobs inside and taxed base from the investments in the buildings. Just to give you a point of reference, most of the vacancies in downtown, as a whole, are vacant less than a year. These three blocks have the highest concentrated vacancies. They also have the longest length of time that the vacancies tend to exist. It was a huge challenge. The plan that involved switching from parallel parking to angled parking created 92 additional public parking spaces. These are free, non, no-cost, public parking spaces. I also have to tell you that we've had more prospects for empty buildings in North Palafox over the last six months than we've had in the last several years combined since the parking went in, because every prospect, without exception, that we dealt with from the, I would suggest, from '05 through '07, that looked at those spaces, told us, "There's not enough parking for my customers. Where are my customers going to park?" Because most of the footprints in that area are large footprints. You can't service an 8,000 to 10,000-square-foot building with two customer parking spaces directly in front of your building. That's part of the reason that they have continued to stay vacant. So those were the reasons why we did it. We engaged an engineering firm that helped Charlottesville, Virginia, and several other northern Virginia communities convert their curbside parallel parking into angled, back-end angled parking. I have to tell you that the other benefits that come from this type of parking, and there's a study in there from UC Davis, and there are multiple studies on the web, if you want to go look at it, from engineering firms, from academic institutions, that make the case for this particular type of parking. It produces superior visibility, it reduces the number of incidences, meaning wrecks, between automobile to automobile, automobile to pedestrian, automobile to bicycle. It slows the traffic, it calms the traffic, it makes it more pedestrian-oriented. There are several charts in your packet that also address the changes that have, we've been able to document with our research that we do with UWF, in terms of the pedestrian traffic and the vehicular traffic in that area, and how it has increased since we have calmed the traffic and slowed down the raceway that used to exist through there as a result of this additional parking. Not only does it offer superior visibility, it's easier for loading and unloading children because the car doors keep the children from running into the street. If they do get away from their parents or caregivers, they run to the sidewalk. It's easier to load packages standing on the sidewalk, or to put anything in your trunk or your truck bed, you're not standing in the traffic lane while you're trying to do that. It's easier than parallel parking. In fact, it's the same first three motions as parallel parking. Parallel parking, if you do a perfect parallel park, is four motions. This is the same first three, except you go back to the curb at the end of the third And most importantly for us, we are as concerned as the city is about liability. We found no city in the last six years that has put head-in angled parking next to an active roadway. And all the research is out there basically says, "Why?" Because this is, by some accounts, 80% safer than head-in angled parking next to an active roadway. Notice the term I'm using, "active roadway." Parking lots are very different, controlled environments. That is not an active roadway. Active roadways because your view is blocked substantially, especially if you've got a big SUV parked right next to you, and you're trying to back out into the traffic lane. We're actually pleased with the results that have been generated so far. Change is tough, especially when we're doing something innovative. I'm happy to tell you that the City of Ann Arbor and Mobile, Alabama, have both been here and taken a look to see how we did it, and we were progressive. FDOT is also considering doing this in Tallahassee as we speak. We were one of the first in Florida, but not one of the first in the nation. I mean, the list that's in your packet is 2005. There have been scores and scores of communities, for all the reasons I described, liability being top first and foremost, that have gone to back-end angled parking next to active roadways since we did. With that, Mr. President, we'd be happy to entertain any questions or clarifications that you might have.
Well, I've been one of the DIB's biggest defenders on the back-end parking. There's a shop I frequent on Palafox Street, and it's one of the things that I routinely get beat up on, and I says, "Well, first of all, it's not my responsibility anymore." And the other one, I would tell them all of the benefits of it, and we have a pretty nice vantage point there to be able to sit there and watch the people that parallel park. And I've pointed out to them, says, "Look at that guy. He's backing into that spot. Boy, isn't that stupid," you know? And they says, "But, you know, what about the traffic behind him? You can't do that." And I says, "Well, he couldn't, but for the person stopping early, being polite enough to let that person in, they would have never been able to back in." But the only complaint you've ever gotten from me on the parking is that asinine ticket I got on an empty street when I was standing within 10 feet of my car, you know, and somebody came by and gave me the ticket. But anyway, Mr. Townsend had a comment or question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any plans to go to additional streets for the back-end parking?
That has been discussed at the Parking and Traffic Committee, and I would ask Mr. Bednar if he has any additional comments. There has not been any decisions made, there have been no recommendations forwarded to the DIB, but there have been comments made by users of downtown who have suggested it's a little confusing to have back-end angled parking on North Palafox and have head-in parking that was put in back in the early '80s on South Jefferson, as an example. But there has been no policy decision made about making that switch.
Mr. Bednar.
Hi, I'm
Hi, I'm Mark Bednar. The discussions that we've had up until now have been with respect to the North Palafox area exclusively. Quite frankly, I think there needs to be a period of time to settle in, to see how it fares. I also hear a lot of people saying, "Well, gee, how do you do that?" Or whatever. From my own personal experience, there is angled front-end space in front of the Milton Courthouse, backing, I've got a four-door F-250. Somebody has an SUV next to me, backing out into Highway 90 traffic right there in front of the courthouse is kind of risky. If I back my truck in, I can see everything. So I was one of the first detractors of it, until I tried it. It seems like the people who have told me that they're dissatisfied with it after they try it, they realize the benefits of it. And just for your own information, there was a presentation made, an analysis made of that area, the North Palafox area, back in 2010 that was commissioned by the DIB. I have that original study. I assume the DIB does, and we have to make a copy of it for anybody.
Okay, thank you.
The calming effect that you mentioned seemed to be something that we might strongly consider, especially on Jefferson. It appears to be working pretty good on Jefferson right now, so I would hope that you would take and affect that calm approach. The other thing is the remote, if I can characterize them as remote, i.e. Ruth Street between Government and Intendenture and those, regarding maybe one car there, the issue that was brought up, that the overzealous, if I can use that term, parking attendant giving a meter there when it appears there are not that much action in that area. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I can respond to that, I suppose. I'll let everybody else do that, but if you look back, and I've got all the old documents, if you look back when the DIB took over the parking and traffic function downtown, one of the major issues that came up was fairness and enforcement. And it's very hard to determine, first, if someone's been parking in a space for a minute, or 10 minutes, or five hours. An enforcement officer can see is, a car is there in a space. And if it's a metered space, whether the meter is in time or off time. As far as determining if someone is nearby or not, the enforcement officers have a route. They really need to keep that route. Otherwise, enforcement becomes kind of a crazy quilt, and then we start getting complaints about a lack of enforcement. So there's a balance between the two that has to be maintained. And again, it's that level of fairness. That was, again, one of the very first things that was listed in the study when the transfer of parking and traffic to the DIB was considered back in 2007.
Okay, yeah, I'm glad to hear that you are consulting and working with the Pensacola Wahoo, because I suspect that that area that I'm talking about will be a prime use, especially during daytime games. And I'm just wondering whether you plan to have the meters that would accommodate five hours over there, because, you know, if they got a 2:00 game or 12:00 game, and if the parking is in effect, it won't be 5:00. So if they spill over there, you might, under consideration, have those type of meters over there that can accommodate folks who are going to the game and would have their vehicle over there.
Mr. Townsend, most of the curbside spaces in the areas on the north-south streets and the western side of downtown don't have time limits on them currently, which we think will be very accommodating to the stadium.
Thank you.
Mr. Weis, just one moment. Sir, I don't know if you were here when I registered my complaint about the last ticket that I got. It wasn't that I was just 10 feet away from my car, and that I'd been there less than five minutes. The issue was, is that it was a completely empty street, except for me in the Fox 10 truck. Why was the guy going down there to do enforcement when the idea is to keep the turnover specifically in the active business area like Palafox? So that was my complaint, that it was an empty street.
The only thing I can tell you is they maintain specific routes at specific times of the day.
And my thing is, is perhaps they shouldn't. Maybe they should stay where there's the biggest turnover, needs to be the biggest turnover of cars.
Well, and quite frankly...
Because otherwise, it comes out to be a money-making scheme. And I know it's not that. I know it's not that. Mr. Kimbrough, and I've had this discussion many times, and I know it's not a money-making scheme, but that's the way it comes off if you're going off and doing the tertiary streets, as Mr. Spencer said, is that you're going there just to rack up some numbers. And so, anyway, but I paid my ticket, and it's the only complaint I've ever registered. Mr. Weis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I remember our discussion, and I was very concerned about the property owners that are currently using the space, that you were doing the back-end parking. And I had gone that very weekend to Chattanooga, and they have a quite wide roadway that they use it. And then later that summer, Austin, it was the first day of implementing it. And in Austin, it was the equivalent of trying to do it on Pace Boulevard. It was a very, very busy road. So I see the benefits. I do want to ask, though, I know EDS is one of the largest landowners, and they were assured that they would have an open door for discussion of their concerns, that they were asked to just let it be done and see how it goes, and there was a policeman to be provided. Have there been any issues with EDS, and have you had further discussion with them if they have any concerns, and checked in with really all the property owners that exist or rent on that space?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. I guess because of my affiliation with Christ Church and Pensacola Day School, unfortunately, when we first announced the back-end parking there, I probably got about 100 calls from parents, and the school board members, and people like that. And I did assure them that if there was a problem, I'd just try it out, you know, we would revisit it, and I even promised, you know, the chairman of the board, I said, "If we have to, we'll take it out and move it up to the next block." And so, went along with that, and the long story short, I haven't heard a word from anybody. Everybody realized they made it big to do it for nothing. It turned out not to be the big issue they thought it was gonna be with the traffic jam and not being able to turn off and pick up their children. Hadn't been an issue at all, and I haven't heard one complaint from one person. And I just wanted to say something to the President. I'm sure there's probably not a city council member here that hadn't gotten a ticket. As chairman of the DIB, I've gotten five, just going to the DIB meetings. But, you know, I wasn't putting money in the meter when I knew I should've. I was in a hurry. And the whole point of it is, and as they pointed out, when we took this over from the city originally, some of the city council members at that point, their biggest concern was that we did not do what the city was currently doing, and it's just kind of enforcing here and there, and letting people that got tickets off and doing this and that. I remember specifically, you know, them putting some language in our charter, that we had to be, you know, first of all, we couldn't fix tickets or let people off just because they were city employees, whoever they were. We could not, you know, we had to be extremely fair in the enforcement. Having said all that, I've also been one of the biggest vocal opponents to the original way the ticketing was done. I thought it was a little overzealous, but I know that Kim has really been reaching out with enforcement officers, training, 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 common sense. That's a big one. We've had some guffaws in the beginning with tickets given out to people that probably shouldn't have been given out, just being overzealous, as you pointed out. But they are constantly training and talking to them about using common sense. And with the new, when we switched the parking management companies, that was one of their biggest presentations, how they work with them to be ambassadors to the community, and not just look like, you know, ticketers going out there and giving tickets. I know we still have a couple of problems, but it's getting better. And, you know, I think in the long term, I can tell you, it has certainly made parking downtown much more readily available on Palafox Street. I have one of the restaurants we had on Palafox before, they started enforcing it. The employees took up all the parking there, and now they go park where they're supposed to, and people can park up and down Palafox. We do have some growing pains, but I think overall, everybody has to agree that it is so much better downtown.
Well, all I have to do is refer to this sheet, and I think I may just start carrying this around with me from day to day for people that do have complaints about it, and just show them what the difference the DIB's made in the parking enforcement. And that one complaint I had, it, just a minor one, but I had the chance to voice it again, but overall, I'm a big supporter of what you guys are doing.
And we appreciate it. And as you, and one of the statistics on that sheet, you know, there's over 6,500 free parking spots downtown, in addition to the ones that are metered and otherwise. So, you know, we're constantly pushing that information, trying to get that out to everybody. Overall, most of the people, some of the people that do complain, or as has been pointed out by Mark earlier, are just people that haven't tried that particular type of parking, or they don't quite, you know, it's education is a big part of it, getting people to understand what's going on. So with the new pay stations, that's a big part of our rollout program, is to have people there, handing out brochures, helping them, explaining to them. And I think it's exciting for downtown. I mean, what we're gonna do moving forward and making the huge, you know, the large amount of parking spots we already have readily available, and work towards identifying future parking as we grow, and with the Maritime Park and going down on that. But getting back to the enforcement, the biggest issue, as I said, was common sense, and they are constantly being trained to use that. They sometimes haven't always used it in certain judgment, but, you know, if somebody's right there or coming up, they're supposed to give them the benefit of doubt and work with them.
Okay, thank you. I've got Mr. Reynolds and Dr. Pratt, and then I'm gonna open it up to the public, and Mr. Townsend, too.
Thank you, Mr. President. As someone who just moved here from Ann Arbor about six months ago, I'm delighted to see these things, because I can tell you, I'll admit, my first time using it, I had to look at it for a few minutes and try to figure out how it worked. But the ease of use, and the fact that I didn't have to have a bunch of change in my pocket all the time or in my car, and whether it's a dollar bill or a credit card, frankly, I ran my credit card through all the time, because these were in place all around the University of Michigan. If you've ever been up there with a lot of college students in cars, parking is, you know, the issues that we have here in Pensacola pale in comparison, but these things will be a major, major benefit to the community. You may hear some gripes initially about how to use them, and, "Oh, I just can't put my quarter in." But from somebody coming in as a visitor, it's gonna make a big difference.
Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to comment on that. I am excited about those as well, because I've gone places where I wanted to go to this building, and it was all metered parking, and we didn't have a quarter. And I'm like, "How far do I have to drive so I can park?" Because I just don't even have a quarter. So I think that'll be much more welcoming. I've talked with Mr. Kimbrough in the past, though, that one of the things that people like about old-timey meters is they're really good spots to lock bikes to. And when we pull all these out, we're stuck with one bike rack at the subway and not much else. And I think that that is something that we need to be thinking about. The DIB, us as the CRA, how do we get bikes to our downtown? I've seen in our city that we are really interested in pretty streetscapes, where we get out, get rid of all of the cheesy bent poles where they put the, you know, handicap signs or whatever, and we put in these nice, big poles that you can't lock your bike to. And so, those are things that are, that's gonna become a little bit of an issue once these meters are gone. So I hope that we can think about that. And then, I guess, since I don't have to park many places, I don't have as many tickets as you guys, and I get to lock my bike, but I will say that I did have the opportunity to try the back-end parking once. And I understand all of the logic. It all makes sense, but then I realized as I was doing it, when I'm parallel parking, when I'm going backwards into it, when I'm having to maneuver, I'm not about to hit anything. There's nothing near me to hit, except for the curb. And then when I'm going backwards where I could hit something, it would be a bumper-to-bumper. Whereas with this, psychologically, you realize, "Well, if I screw up, I'm gonna gouge the side of their car." So I think that there's definitely a, while you can go through all of the logic, there is also that, I found myself much more anxious in doing it than I do when I'm parallel parking, which I can, I'm not the best, but I can do pretty easily, because I'm not quite as nervous, that the things I might run into are really close, and if I screw up. And then, conversely, it's not like backing out of angled parking, because when you're backing out of front-end parking, you're backing into the big, open parking lot or something like that. And so, I'm very sympathetic to the anxiety that people have about this back-end parking, because it is, if you screw up, you're gonna do real damage.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Pratt mentioned something that I neglected to tell you. As part of this rollout, as I mentioned, there'll be several weeks of education where we'll actually have parking ambassadors in that particular flyer, as well as, there'll be videos and PSAs and all of that, explaining why we're doing this and how to use them. But the poles themselves, the meter heads will come down first, the poles will stay up for up to three months, because as we direct people to the pay stations, because you could be as far as eight spaces away and have to figure out, "What do I do? The meter's gone." And so, the signage, there'll be more signage initially, but after three months or so have passed, and that tends to be kind of the trend nationally, then we'll take down a lot of that temporary signage and go to just the, if you've been in downtown New Orleans, almost the exact same sign package.
Dr. Wood, then, the vice president.
I think it's pretty well-known, my unhappiness with some of the things that have occurred in the past, but I'm gonna start off by my remarks by commending all of y'all. Number one, y'all put in a lot of hours to make it a better city, and you do it without any pay. And in the last two years, I've had the opportunity to see most of the cities in the state of Florida. I'm here to tell you that y'all have done an exceptional job, not so much with the parking, but with the DIB. I have taken pictures in Orlando, Florida, where the largest university, second-largest university in the United States exists, and across the street, I can show you a strip of shops that are completely empty. I can show you this over and over and over, in places that are considered very prosperous. Y'all have done an exceptionally fine job. I think the angst that I had with the parking has been the overzealous, as Mr. Merrill said. And from the standpoint of the people doing it, they were doing their job. You know, but when I, you know, talk to county commissioners, and they're telling me about getting tickets, I talk to policemen, and they're telling me they're getting tickets, I talk to firemen, it's almost like an arrogance, that, you know, that we're above all of you. You know, "You come down here, and this is our territory, and we'll take care of you." You know, we're probably more sensitive because we're public officials. Somebody comes to us, we realize, you know, we're not in the driver's seat, the person that's talking to us is. But I do commend you for what y'all have done. I think y'all have done exceptionally well. If you go around the state and look at other downtowns, most are not as prosperous as what we have here. So it's a compliment to Ms. Kimbrough and the improvement board for what y'all have done. And in closing, when the issue about the Country Day School came up, we reserved two pews of St. Christopher's for you and your family, should things not go right, and...
And we appreciate that.
I want you to know that we still have those reserved for you. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Dr. Wood, if you hadn't had a chance to really look over this, I asked you to look at it once, twice, three times?
Can I say one other thing? The angst that I had is not basically that. I talked to a gentleman at church who told me that he had a business in downtown Pensacola for over 30 years, and he left. And I asked him why, and he said, "Parking." So when you get a statement like that, that's awfully powerful. That man said that he was downtown, I think it was 25 to 30 years, and because of parking, he left. It has to register. So I hear that there's efforts being made to moderate some things, and I certainly hope so, because I had a man from Gulf Breeze write me the letter, and he said that he would never come downtown. Now, you know, when you say "never," you know, but these are actual examples of correspondence that I've gotten from people that have gotten so angry that, you know...
The business that left, it wasn't because of lack of parking?
No, 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 not, wasn't that. He didn't go into detail. He just told me basically that he left because of parking, so...
Mr. Townsend.
Thank you. I think we would all agree that we have a common purpose, as I stated... earlier, when we were talking about the pocket, that we wanna see downtown improve, and be successful, and all businesses can be successful. And I think we would be remiss, as a council, as to not give our gratitude to the board and the DIB for all that you have done down there, because downtown is tremendous. We have some problem with parking, and, you know, we're gonna have problems with a little everything. But I think we will all agree that what we see going on downtown, we are all happy and satisfied with. And we wanna thank you folks for doing it, because you got folks coming down there, glad to come down there, you got pedestrians walking down there, you having activities, everybody want to come downtown Pensacola. So I personally thank you for all that you've done, in terms of bringing Pensacola back to where folks want to come. It's not closed at five o'clock anymore. It's vibrant, and I appreciate it. Even bring out some of the old bones of mine to come down there and walk during gallery night. So we appreciate that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Spencer.
I appreciate the presentation and the volunteer efforts, as well as, including our executive director, Kim Kimbrough. I've just got a few questions that I imagine that I'll just need to meet with the executive director. I'd like to share some of those questions I'm gonna ask. One being, there are six thousand five hundred and eighty-nine free, no-charge public parking spaces within the downtown parking management district. So what I'll follow up on is, while that number sounds generous, does that include during all of these events, that we're asking everyone, inviting everyone to come to downtown? It seems to me that during events, you're boasting a tremendous amount of spaces, and families that count every single dollar do not have access to six thousand five hundred and eighty-nine free spaces.
Actually, during events, that number's even higher.
Okay.
The number of total spaces that, during events, that are paid, really, never is more than three off-street facilities. Now, we can't speak to what the private lots do, and what the private contractors do. You've all seen the little pink signs that say five bucks. That's not--
Right.
That's not us. Ours are three dollars. All of our special event rates are three dollars, because we're not in this to make money. We're in this to cover the cost of doing what we're doing, and to enhance the experience of being downtown.
So that includes the garages--
Oh, yeah.
--that we have. I think we have an opportunity, if not a responsibility, to do a significantly better job of lighting, advertising, notifying the users of downtown, how do you get to these garages?
PensacolaParking.com.
You know what, Kim? I'm sorry, a lot of people just don't even have computers. It's just, I mean, these are mom and dad, and they're looking. I'm just saying, what I hope that we can do is establish a much better way for those concentrated parking areas to feel very accessible. Not saying you're guilty.
Okay, wayfinding program with signage, with public signage, I mean, public parking on it would be very helpful.
Right. Well, I've got my ideas on that, too, as you well know. The, you know, there's a few, we've got a few public relations problems. Perception is reality, as we've all heard. I participated in the workshop. I'm still disappointed that the discussion about what's happening on the secondary and tertiary streets, that something hasn't been done. And Mr. Bednar, I appreciate your comments, but I want to say, I'm frustrated that if the pattern is just a pattern, it still may be reevaluated, as, in terms of those people having a route, and a routine to check streets by the hour. Perhaps that pattern, right now, is dysfunctional in relationship to the unused capacity. And I have been documenting for months, the vacancy of Jefferson Street, for instance, both sides, from eight AM all the way through. It's, you know, I mean, it doesn't make, it doesn't warm my soul to see those vacancies all day long. So regardless of tickets or no tickets, when I see all that, I'm, that's a sign of an anemic daytime downtown. I would like to, you to provide the list for me, the net number of new businesses since 2005--
Absolutely.
--right, and have an understanding of, again, the boundaries. I just need to, I need to be enlightened. And finally, to follow up on Councilwoman DeWes's comments, that back-end angled parking, I too recall that it was implemented with a promise that it was, would be revisited, those individuals would have an opportunity to voice their post-installation, whether or not some have approached you or not. Let's follow through with that. And finally, you know, maybe I'm, I like to think that I'm a glasses-half-full person, but in terms of the number of vacancies downtown, or I should say, some that are just so troubling because of the extended period of the vacancy, I'm hoping that when you provide me a list of the, as I get more educated about the eighty thousand square feet, and then other vacant properties, for instance, above the post office, I know the owners, it's been vacant for more than twenty-five years, coincidentally, used to be the DIB office, next to Dollar Hides, the whole Blunt-Brent complex, it's a sad commentary, in terms of being in the heart of downtown, and for decades, virtually vacant. The former Big Sporting Goods store on Baylen Street, well-known property owner, plenty of resources, shuttered with aluminum siding, telling the world that we're not healthy down here. And I could go on and on. But, you know, that's a thorn in my side. Look forward to the installation of the new meters, and good luck getting through the learning period. And finally, as a sort of crescendo comment, something that I said during the workshop, and I will continue to say it, is I do not believe that the DIB, nor you as the executive director, should be quite as invisible, or less visible. I'm hoping that by being a DIB that has the opportunity to feel the pulse of the community, or get the feedback from people, that you will begin to look at being in a much more, no pun intended, but transparent location. And the layers and layers of committees that seem to be in front of you, Mr. Kimbrough, just, you know, that's something I don't agree with. I think it would be good for you to receive the frontline comments. It's not an easy task, and I know that it would, that it is frustrating, but I do think that the DIB, and I look at other cities, needs to be where pedestrians, users, don't have to work so hard to figure out where the executive director is.
Okay, Ms. DeWes, on Mr. Johnson, and then I'm gonna ask the committee to allow the public to speak. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much. And mine's just a follow-up question on my earlier comment. I believe that President Hall said earlier that our agreement with the city, with the DIB expires in about a year and a half. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, and what concern--
It doesn't expire. It's set for review.
Review, okay. Thank you for that clarification. My concerns are, and it gets back to the ownership of these machines, who currently owns the parking meters in place today?
Legally, fee simple, they belong to the city of Pensacola. As part of, when the Parking Management District was created, all of the parking assets, from the city, the county, and the state of Florida, who are all partners in the Parking Management District, put their assets into the Parking Management District, and assigned the DIB as the managing partner, to determine the use, the disposal. The only thing that is exempted, expressly exempted, is real estate. We cannot transfer or encumber real estate in any way. But any chattels, personal property, any equipment in trade, we can use those as we best see fit, or we can dispose of those as we best see fit. I mean, the committee has not made a formal decision. Again, there've been some discussions multiple times at the committee level for parking and traffic, about potentially selling those old mechanical meters, because, again, the Parking Management District prescribes that any revenue made on the city, the county, or the state properties, has to go back into the Parking Management District, cannot go to the DIB for parking enhancement activities and purposes within the Parking Management District. So if we sold them, that money would go back into the Parking Management District. And sold them as novelty items to the general public, because with the exception of, and I'm not gonna call any names, but some very small towns, nobody's using these mechanical meters anymore, for the reasons we're not using them anymore.
Yeah, I agree, they're outdated, and do need to be replaced. But I'm just trying to get clear in my mind, if something happened, and the city took back over parking in the city of Pensacola at some future date, who would actually own those machines? And that's where I'm just kinda going with that.
I can answer that. And our general counsel might wanna clarify if I misstate. The way the agreement works, both with the city, the county, and the state, if any of those entities were to separate, they would assume all, they would essentially step into our shoes. So any agreements that we have, any contracts we have, any obligations that we have, any unmet liabilities that we have, those entities would assume those as if they were us.
And I'm trying to move along quickly here. The other, we had about several speakers at the Boyd Forum here, earlier this afternoon, and they were mostly discussing issues with parking. So as I've been a councilman three-plus years, I can, one of the most consistent complaints I have is about parking, and those issues. So it's always out there. One was about the appeal process. A gentleman spoke about that process, and I'm not sure that I understand how that works, if someone gets a ticket that they felt was given to them unfairly. How, could you very briefly give me that process of how that works?
Under city ordinance, that I believe was passed in sometime in the late nineteen-eighties or the early nineteen-nineties, the individual, once they get a ticket, they have seventy-two hours, and we've interpreted that as seventy-two business hours. So it doesn't apply on days that the mail doesn't run. Seventy-two hours to either appeal that ticket, or pay that ticket. If they appeal it, within that seventy-two hours, and we take postmarks, and we keep the envelopes every time they come, as part of that process. So some of these folks, you know, we've got the envelope with the date you mailed it on it, and that is part of the process. So if it's mailed within seventy-two hours, then that parking citation is put on hold. And it is put on hold until the hearing officer is able to hear the case, which is, hear the appeal, which is usually within thirty days. And they're also sent a notice, that they have the right to appear, they have a right to present evidence if they so choose, and telling them when and where that's going to occur. It also gives them an opportunity, and a number, and a name, to call if they want to, if that's not convenient for them. So all of that goes out, in several weeks in advance of the scheduled hearing. And then after the hearing officer has ruled, then they are sent a notice, if they choose, if they don't appear, about what the decision was. And if the decision was that the parking citation was upheld, then they're given six additional days to pay the fine, without any penalty. And that, much of that is by ordinance.
Okay, and great. And last, in closing, I just wanna thank you for working with Vinyl and their tour buses. I do appreciate that. You know, Vinyl's been a great addition to downtown Pensacola. To be in downtown Pensacola, and see five-hundred-plus people in downtown at a business on a Tuesday night, is real exciting to me. And I would continue to work with them, I would encourage you to continue to work with them, with those tour buses. And I know that that has been an issue with the business next door. But, you know, when you have park, when you have people that are trying to find parking, and there's no parking, that tells me that you have successful businesses in downtown Pensacola. And I think that that might be a good problem to have. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Dunlap, but Ms. DeWes, come on forward. I'm gonna let Ms. Dunlap respond.
I just wanted to wrap up some of the things that I've heard today, with some comments of my own. First of all--
Do you wanna, would you like to wait until after you heard from the public?
No, no, it doesn't matter where it comes in. As in any public entity, we really hear mostly from people who want to complain. I promise you, council does not want to go back to the way it was, when, before we had the Parking Management District in the DIB. You are right. We willingly do this, we take the slings and arrows, but we feel that we are doing a job for all of the citizens of downtown, and we've done it fairly. Mr. Peacock's issue was because he chose not to put a quarter in the meter. We have charged our traffic, or our parking enforcement people, to please put on blinders and do your job. Don't play favorites with anybody. If you recognize the car, that's great. But many, many times, they don't. If there is a street that's two blocks over, we need to hit it on a somewhat regular basis, because if we target a main street too often, then the businesses are sitting in the complaint seat, and they're saying, you're too aggressive here on Palafox. We've been through that, too. We try to be fair throughout the Parking Management District, and we keep our blinders on, and these guys can't know who owns every car. New Orleans is a great example of our new parking meters that are coming in. I was recently there, gladly paid one dollar and fifty cents per hour, used my credit card. When I finished at Cafe Dumond, I was able to get in my car, and go somewhere else, and use up the rest. I think you're going to see this as a bright spot. I liked what Dr. Pratt said about, what are we going to do when there are no more parking meter poles on which to put our bikes? I would like to see us get more bike racks, especially on Palafox. We could even do away with some of the benches where the transient people sit and wait to beg for money, and we could put multiple, the larger bike racks there, to tell the whole world that we are bike-friendly. We talk about the businesses that have come and gone, due to whatever reasons. I, for the first time in twenty years, have a full house. And I've got two businesses that left within, one about seven years ago, and one that left just last year, both of which have called me, asking if I had any vacancies, could they come back. Even had one call, and had the balls to ask me if they could put a table out for their jewelry on gallery night. I said, we've changed our rules, and we're not putting anyone in front of our businesses who competes with our business. Pardon the words I used. With regards to Mr. Kimbrough's presence, I want to say, this man is more present than any, I love you guys, any councilman, or any county commissioner, when it comes to downtown events. I have seen him present at the Palafox Market, on many days when he could be home in bed. He is at every gallery night. He is at the Pelican Drop. At the VIP room, that was a personal invitation to every councilman and every county commissioner, there was one county commissioner that showed up. And that was it. Mr. Kimbrough was there. And I also see him every Sunday at the First United Methodist Church. But to wrap it up, as a developer, for over twenty years in downtown, as a thirteen-year owner of a business downtown, with my historic Pensacola photographs, and as a resident of downtown for six-plus years, I can say without a doubt, the single greatest reason that downtown has experienced this rebirth is not because of gallery nights, not because of the number of great parades that we have, not because of the number of street closings we have by vendors who want to come in and close our street to use up Palafox, like the wine, the martini festival. It's not the number of bars and nightclubs, it's not the number of new-- It's not the number of bars and nightclubs, it's not the number of new boutiques that we've got downtown. The single greatest reason that we have been seeing a rebirth in downtown is because we took control of the parking and we made it better. The businesses that used to take up space, and I am so guilty because habits are hard to break. I knew that when I was parked in front of my shop that I was taking my customers' parking space, but time would get away from you, you'd just forget about it, and over a period of one year, I bet I only got two tickets. I should have been slammed with tickets because I was taking up a valuable parking place. Throughout downtown, we have seen great things happen, but it really, in my opinion, all began with when we began to manage, better manage, the parking. I do not feel that we are aggressive. I think that we're consistent, and I thank you for your appreciation.
Thank you. Ms. Dubusson.
Yes. Councilman, as you know, I attend a lot of meetings in this community, whether it's the county, the CRA, anything that is having to do with the public. I try to be there if it's a publicly advertised meeting, if I can possibly do it. I make every one of the DIB meetings, in fact, I have served on every one of their committees except parking, but I have attended the parking meetings. Without a doubt, the executive director's presence at the meeting would unquestionably be almost at every single meeting in which there is a formal meeting of the DIB, he is there. Secondly, I have worked in Belmont de Villiers for quite a while, and Mr. Kimbrough took the lead in working with the groups from there in how we could tie Belmont de Villiers' development to downtown and working with the North End of Palafox particularly to make it into a transitional mode so that people would identify both sections of the historical downtown Pensacola. I have watched these individuals spend hours. They get there for meetings at 7:30 in the morning, 8 o'clock in the morning, and they stay until the business is finished. They are committed to downtown, they put their own personal businesses aside in order to provide opportunities for the whole population, they put their money into sponsoring the events that go out in the name of the DIB until they are strong-armed into doing them for specific individuals' purposes, and then they give their volunteer time in order to make those things happen for those individuals who have made promises in the name of downtown. I believe without a doubt that this council needs to thank the DIB every time you turn around and where the parking issues are concerned. We need to recognize that any change is painful to anyone. There's a book, Who Moved My Cheese?, which perfectly illustrates that until we get used to change, we're going to say it's somebody else's fault, and we're going to demonize whoever made the change. There is an issue of fairness which this group has open-handedly handled in a very transparent manner, and to have them be accused of not being transparent, to me, is actually an insult as a citizen because I have witnessed individuals coming in. I myself have had two tickets, one because I actually parked and was in a meeting for too long, the second one because I walked home and left my car parked downtown because I forgot I had driven downtown. Now, you know, being honest enough to tell you that, I can say there are people who did say to me, they thought it was terrible, that they could not get excused from a ticket because they were an elected official. I know of elected officials who have refused to pay their tickets and dared this group to take them to court when they have elements over. I have seen elected officials park in one parking space, and when their time ran out, run down from their office and U-turn on Palafox to get to a free parking space on the other side of the street, thereby tying up the downtown business area while they're upstairs, and then they talk about walking downtown all the time. I believe very strongly that this community needs to identify that it is moving forward as much as it is by embracing the progress which these people, who are all business individuals, have brought to this community with careful deliberation. And if you're interested in being a part of making downtown change, then come to the meetings. Mr. Spencer is your board representative, and I have risen before to say someone from this board needs to be showing up at the meetings, and I would really encourage you to show up and be there and here. It is not an issue of sunshine because these are publicly advertised meetings, so you may show up and weigh in at those meetings. And I'm getting a little emotional because I get frustrated when I hear people trying to pile on, which is what I consider was going on today with the DIB. I believe this is a very wonderful part of our community. I have worked in main street communities throughout the United States. Change in downtown is imperative, or else change will lead to decay. So if you don't change in a progressive manner, you will end up with a decaying downtown. This group has embraced the change needed, and I salute you all. Thank you.
Yeah, for the 10th time, I embrace you, I love you, you're doing a great job, and if I was piling on, I, please forgive me. Okay.
You may not have come prepared to answer this question, but the vendors on the, on Saturday vendors, I've had a couple call me regarding the projected increase in the price for spaces.
I can answer that. The Councilman Townsend, the, when we originally did the business plan for the Parking Management District back in 2007, and 2000, the parking, this came out of the retail strategy, and I hope those of you who have been on council a few years, I hope you remember the retail strategy. It was a four-year plan, and we're just about at the end of that, and we've done probably 85% to 88% of it, which is great. One of the things that was recommended was the Palafox Market, and it was actually proposed and the business plan calls for it to be, ultimately be a two-day market, operating on Saturdays and Sundays. We're not there yet. And actually, the business plan also projected that in year, after year three, it would go to a nominal fee to start weaning it, because the DIB, with the exception of the first year, the first year the CRA put in the lion's share of the money. We jointly managed it, we jointly operated it, the DIB wrote the business plan. In years two, three, and four, it's been all the DIB. The CRA is still our partner, they pay for the usage of the park, but everything else is the DIB. The DIB approaches this much the same way they do many of the other activities that they undertake or start or facilitate within the downtown. We want to get them to a point where they're doing well, where they can start taking on some ownership, the entities that are involved, and start standing on their own, because our dollars are very limited, and it's just like yours, I assume, ours have been declining for each of the last five years. Board made a decision this past year that they were going to pull back on some of the dollars that they, and the subsidy is more than $30,000 a year, and that does not include operating overhead, office time, telephones, you know, that kind of stuff. This is actually things we pay cash for to make the market work. The market was supposed to end, the 2011 season, which was season four, was supposed to end on, at the end of December. Early in November, the DIB was approached by a group of vendors from the market who said, and it was probably a dozen of them that showed up, and said, "We've talked to many of our other vendors, we've got crops, we've got art, we would like to, we got baked goods, we'd like to continue this. Would you consider doing that?" And several members of the board explained to those vendors who were there, some were farmers, some were artisans, some were bakers. It's a great thing, but it cost us, I mean, cash out of pocket, about $500, and I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but between $500 and $600 a week to operate the market. We don't have it. It's not in the budget, we didn't plan for it, we've got no contingency, no miscellaneous funds, we can't do that. How are we going to pay for it? We've got the budget planned for the market year to start again, May the 1st, and at that point, it is going to go to a year-round market. Those vendors who were at that meeting were so enthusiastic, and some of them may be a little more so than they should have been because we've gotten some pushback from other vendors, they said, "We'll pay for it." How much would it take if, how many, and they asked us, "What's your, what's the average number?", and we told them the average number's 42 that we normally get on a week, and that's been less in January for obvious reasons, but it's 42, some weeks we have as many as 70 vendors there. But the ones that were there were enthusiastic, "We'll pay, we'll pay." And so a couple of the board members quickly on the back of some of their paper did the math and said, "Well, here's what we got to have and what we got to, if you guys are willing to pay this," and it was $15 a week, and that's only during the period of January 1 to the April 30, during that hiatus when we were not planning to operate the market. And so that's what's happened, that's why there's a fee, because that's the only way we can operate the market during that period. Once we get to May the 1st, and we will plan to go year-round and some other additional changes that I think you'll find, we'll be able to talk about here soon, that I think you'll find very attractive in terms of drawing more traffic, because the market on average Saturday, again, not January, the world's different, it's colder, less product out there, but on average Saturday, May through December, we had better than 3,000 customers a Saturday. That's pretty substantial for driving additional traffic and business downtown. So that $15 fee is, it's not going to completely go away, but it's going to be greatly reduced in the, start when the new 2012 season actually starts on May the 1st. But that's the only way it could operate, and all the folks who came to the DIB and they packed the room, "We'll pay, we'll pay, we'll pay." And that's how it happened.
Well, I guess the biggest problem here is our in-house problem, not realizing that DIB had in fact taken over the market from CRA. I did not know that. It never had been communicated, as far as I know, to the council that CRA had relinquished that to the DIB.
Well, they are still legally our partner, and, but what the CRA provides now is that they provide the fee for the usage of the park. They pay that to the city. Everything else, we pay for, and we operate.
It's an in-house problem. Thank you.
Yes, I recognize Mr. Gerald's. Would the next member of the public come up to the microphone, please? Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, Mr. President. Ms. Dubus, not Dubusson, Ms. Dunlap, did I understand you to say that Mr. Peacock's problem was a result of the fact that he didn't put or did not want to put a quarter into the meter?
Oh, I'm sure that if he had thought about it, he would have, but he told me right outside, he said, I said, "Were you in a time space or a meter space?" He said it was a meter. I said, "So when our parking attendant came by, all the parking attendants saw that here is a car parked in front of a meter that said expired. He is bound by what we told him to do, to issue a ticket." Mr. Peacock was, I guess, inside his building. So we can't tell our, our meter, our parking attendants to, "Oh, before you give this ticket, go run and see if you can find this person." It would just not be logical. And that's usually what happens, especially when there's a, you know, I was only in there for a minute, I got a ticket just two Saturdays ago when I parked my daughter's car on Intendencia Street where we live now, and I ran in thinking she was going to leave right away and there was still a few minutes on the tick, on the meter. And she was furious. When she came back in, she had stayed a little while longer to talk to me, and she got a ticket. I said, "Don't worry, baby, I'll pay for it," which I promptly did.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question, because it reminds me of a game we sort of, some of us probably, I say some of us, probably played as children, when you would share an incident or a story with one parent, and then you shared with the other one. It's important to hear both sides of the story before decisions are made. And my question is, is there a place or a statement on the ticket itself that lets people know that for all complaints, where to take it? Is that statement on the ticket? Because bringing it here won't do us any good. We'd end up doing what we did today. So if there's a statement on that ticket, if there isn't, perhaps there should be, that says, "All complaints, take it to the DIB, don't bring it over here," because we'll listen to it, but we have, we're powerless to do anything.
We get that very frequently. Yes, sir, it is on the back of every single ticket. There is an address and a phone number.
So then?
And the phone number's actually on the front as well, the address is only on the back.
So then that means this memorandum, information of authority or opportunity to speak at public meetings, I don't think it ought to even be allowed in here since we have no jurisdiction. If it's on the ticket, tell them to read what's on the ticket and take it to you guys. We don't need to hear it. We're not going to come back, as I indicated earlier, to referee what you folks are doing.
You're being too logical.
Well, they're bringing it to the wrong place, and I'll just put it on the table. We should send them to the right place. No point in us listening to it. We can't do anything.
I agree with you on that. I think right now, just because of some articles that were in the paper where they picked up on one person that complained, and complaints going around that people want to take advantage of that, as Ms. Dunlap said, and, you know, "I've got my tickets, I take my lumps, I pay my ticket."
Exactly, and it seems like, you know...
"'Cause I screwed up and I knew what I did. I'm not going to try to get out of it or make a big deal about it." But anyway, I want to say one thing about the enforcement of parking down some of these side streets. Unless they actually see the person get in or out of the car, I mean, even if it's just one car or two cars on a block where there might be 10 parking spaces or whatever, they have no idea, "No, has that person been there a week?", you know, overnight, you know, what are they supposed to do? Just go, "Well, I think I just, there's only one car here, I'm not going to give them a ticket," when somebody might be saying, "Well, I know, I'll never get tickets, I'm just going to keep parking there." Yes, we have problems, and I said it's common sense, and we're trying to work forward towards getting better and better with the enforcement, and maybe we do need to look at some of the, if some of the people seem to think there's a problem with enforcement on these tertiary streets, we'll certainly take a look at that, but that doesn't seem to be the case with our numbers and what's really going on, but we'd be glad to look at all that. And we do appreciate all your comments, and I do feel sorry for y'all for having to take a lot of public comment on parking when there, as you pointed out, at this point in time, nothing you can really do about it other than refer them to the proper, to the proper, you know, venue for their grievances, but they don't really want to take it to the proper venue, I'm just telling you. If they thought they had a case, they just want to come stand up and get their five minutes, which is, I guess they're right, but thank you.
It reminds me of a comment I make on occasion, is that somehow here today, we used to say that, you know, "You've been played or you've been had." And it's unfortunate that the majority of the complainants are not here, but I do know this, of having, being a parent and a grandparent, that one story was true and the other one may not be true, and we don't know which one it was. So if we did not allow those discussions, we wouldn't hear all of that and then come back, and then you guys give a legitimate, reasonable explanation for what's going on. But I have not had the pleasant opportunity of receiving one of those tickets, and therefore that's, hence my question, is it stated on the ticket itself where individuals should take their complaints? And if they, if it's on the ticket clearly written, then I don't think we ought to listen to it at all.
And you get a warning, don't you, on your first offense?
Unless it's a safety violation, parking in front of a fire hydrant or parking in a handicapped space or parking the wrong way against the flow of traffic, except for those safety violations, you're going to get a warning.
You might even get two warnings. I think I got two, one warning.
And based on the information in this, in this document, we don't have to listen to it. We should send it to the appropriate agency at once.
Well, that's true, Mr. Gerald's, but most of the, that we heard from on the public came in the Boyd Forum, and we've made a practice of pretty much allowing people to speak at will there regardless of whether it's under our control or not. But the other thing is, we asked the DIB to come here, we asked specifically about the parking issues, so that's of a public interest, and I've got at least two more people in the public that want to speak.
I wasn't referring to the DIB being here, I'm referring to the fiasco at the beginning, even if it was the Boyd Forum or the 23rd Song. I think it was inappropriate for them to bring it here if it's clearly stated on the ticket where you take your complaints. Thank you.
Well, I encourage any committee member or a council member during any meeting, if you have an objection to what a person is saying, is to speak up. Okay, state your name, sir.
I'm John Schaefer. I own a business on Palafox. Couple of us came down, thank Dr. Pratt for giving us a heads up that y'all will be speaking on the, I guess you call it the backend parking on Palafox. But first, I just want to say thank you, and I mean that, I'm just fluffing you, I really appreciate everybody that serves. I don't, so I very much, I serve in other ways, I feel, so I really appreciate everybody that's here. Mr. Kimbrough, on that market, I happen to know one of the vendors, she sells, you know, corn and a few products, the $15 seemed really small to a lot of us in this room, but if there's any way we can find money to offset some of those costs for some of those vendors, that'd be really cool. But what I'm here to talk about is the impact that parking's had on my business. We have thousands of clients. I'm not surprised EDS doesn't have a problem with it, they're continuing, they're users every day, they know, they come down every day, so they learn the process and have worked it, and most of the people when they're doing it, they're among peers, right? You pick up your kids at a certain time, everybody knows the routine. My clientele come once every few years at best, they are having to learn this, and we waited probably, what, nine months to come down and say something. I can tell you, it's not gotten any better. It's gotten to the point where it's a very much a distraction. My clients come in usually frazzled, especially if there's any traffic behind them, because people just don't realize that they, they need to stop 10, 20 feet back so that people can park backwards. But I'm not a city planner, I don't have any example, I just want to make sure I'm the... I don't have any example, I just want to make sure I'm the voice for the clients who definitely have not appreciated that parking. There's one other business owner, too, I think.
What type of, I'm just curious, what type of business?
It's an insurance agency downtown, right there near Martin Luther King's bust. We really strongly encourage people to come down, and we serve our clients best when it's face-to-face. I very much depend on referrals for marketing, and we have a really good team. There's about seven of us there. We are starting to feel like it is a detriment. It is getting to be where, please refer us, you know, "Well, there's 28 other agents in this area. Why pass two of them to come downtown if it's going, if it's perceived to be, you know, difficult to park there?"
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. I came down with John. Excuse me. I'm David Schmidt. I own Schmidt Music on North Palafox, same block. I've been there since 1982. We are struggling with the backend parking. I pull in customers from all ends of both counties, Santa Rosa and Escambia, who are a destination business. They're having a very hard time getting their head around it, as is the traffic that is mainly going from north to south down Palafox. They're having a very difficult time with that. Mr. Kimbrough was nice enough to come by when it first happened. I was alarmed. I spoke to him about it. He came by, showed me a nice plan, said, "Be patient." Well, it's been about nine months now, and the general public is not understanding it. I have had, I'm not exaggerating, literally hundreds and hundreds of complaints, and I'm having people that say, "I'm just not going to come downtown." So, shopping-wise, we're having a heck of a time with it. When it's a gallery night or something else, the day-to-day traffic has gone. They can park their cars and off they go. It's not the bustle of nine to five that's going down there. But all my business through the daytime, the people that are, even if they've been there before and have figured out how to park, the people that are coming behind them are the ones that don't understand it and won't let them in. So, we're hearing horn honking, brakes squealing, a lot of fist, the international salute. We're having a lot of customers with angst that are coming in there, and I'm feeling it in my business. This is after 30-plus years in downtown. And I can't speak for John, but I am talking about only the backend parking. I'm very pleased with downtown. Been avid supporter of downtown for over 30 years down there. This problem is a difficult problem, and we're having to re-educate the population over and over again. I get basically a new crop of customers every year that are entering the public school music program. So, they're coming down from rural areas and all over. They haven't experienced, they can't, they just don't get it, and they say, "This is my first trip downtown. What's up with the parking? It's been so bad, we put it on our television screen, so it just runs 24/7, says, 'Contact the D I B.'" For the D I B to not be aware of this is amazing to me. We're having a terrible time with it, and I'm feeling it severely in my business. I understand the need for more parking. I'm all for it. If we could do pull-in, that'd be, that'd sure be a compromise that the people have already experienced somewhere. Milton, like you said, if you park your F-250 there, well, that's just fine. You can see out fine if you're pulling out. But if you're in a Prius on the south side of it, you can't see anything. And if it's an SUV and you're in a small compact car, you see nothing. You're pulling out just as blindly into that traffic as if there was a wall there, and they're having a terrible time backing up. They're running over the curb, they're banging into the trees, you know? And I don't know if all of you guys have tried that yet. I'd say try it at 2:30, you know, right as E D S is getting let out and come down there. It is a real problem. If they did pull-in parking, still at the angle parking but pull-in, we could live with it. I've talked to every single merchant on my side of the street on that 100 block of Palafox. We're all frustrated, every single one of us, to the person, every single business there. And we have been patient with this, and I don't believe it's a matter of settling in. We've had nine months to settle in, and we are constantly having to do it. Soon as this summer rolls around again and school starts back up, I'm going to have my entire new crop of customers coming in, going to voice the same frustrations. I think you're putting out the complete opposite message that you're trying to convey with the great things you've done in downtown Pensacola, which is, you know, in 82, there was only one other business open on my whole block. So, you guys have done a great job over the years of this. This backend parking, I have my doubts whether we'll ever really, will ever really train the community for that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
I'll wait until the citizens are done.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Marlon Mueller. I've got a couple of questions on the new parking meter boxes and the funds generated by and how they're going to be paid for. Let's see, to start with, are the machines going to be financed upfront? I know they're very expensive.
Yes.
And, okay. I mean, let's see. So, at a quarter of time, do you guys have some kind of idea of when you think they'll be paid off?
About five years.
Five years, okay. What hap, is the quarter raise going to be citywide, or is it just going to be on those specific metered spots?
Parking management district-wide.
District-wide, okay. And what will happen when the, with the extra 25 cents when the boxes are paid off?
That'll be a decision of the board of the D I B, but it has to be, again, those dollars will have to be spent on parking enhancement activities within the parking management district. It can't flow to the D I B or to anybody else.
Okay, so there's no plan at this time what will happen once things are paid off?
No.
And then you have a budget for the changeover. How is that going to be paid for?
The installation is actually included in the financing price and the changeover of the electronic meters. We're getting bids on that right now.
Okay, and the demolition or whatever you'd call of the old meters?
The removal of the old meters and the patching of the sidewalk will actually occur out of budgeted parking management district funds for the current fiscal year.
Okay.
I don't remember what that amount is. It's not significant. It's a couple thousand dollars. It's not a lot.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weiss, let's just go ahead and wrap this up quickly here so we can get to our consent agenda. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask a question about what other cities have done with issues like Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Schmidt have had. I mean, there's, I'm very concerned that they stand to lose customers or not have referrals for repeat customers, because, you know, first impressions in business, that paints how the transaction goes, and they're coming in frazzled and frustrated. And even if you had an ambassador for a few months that would help people park, that's not going to solve their long-term concerns. So, is there something in place when you start meeting with these business owners?
There is, and unfortunately, it doesn't completely solve the problem the way that some of them would like to have it solved. When we engaged the firm that designed the parking, and we looked for a engineering firm, traffic engineering firm, that had that kind of experience, and actually, they're the ones that suggested this is far safer, they're the ones that brought the liability exposure to our attention and pointed to all these academic and technical studies that had been done over the last five or six years across the country. And they went to great lengths to give people options in their redesign of that three-block area. There are, yes, there are more of backend angled parking than there are any other kind of parking, but there also is parallel parking directly across the wide one lane of traffic now that is in the same, on the same side of the street going north or south. And so, obviously, for folks who can't quite get the hang of the backend parking, they have the option of using those parallel spaces, which are also the same time restrictions, the same free, same, same no cost. Additionally, they went to great lengths because one of the concerns was, well, some people really don't like either one of those options. They want a surface lot. And that particular block in particular has the North Palafox parking lot that has between 75 and 90 parking spaces a day that are available to the general public. It has a pay box, so yes, it costs, you know, a couple of bucks to park there, but there are always, with the exception of when there are special events downtown, dozens of spaces available on that lot that will allow you to go in and park on a parking lot, because the total number of spaces on that lot, I honestly don't remember it, but it's in excess of 130. And there's a sizable number of those others that are leased to the G S A.
Mr. Kimbrough, I want to thank you and Mr. Merrill and your board. Now, Dr. Pratt is wanting to ask a question. I'm going to ask that she do it offline, that you guys do it at the back of the room, and just so we can move on to our consent agenda. We spent much more time on this than I anticipated. You and I talked on the phone last week. I gave you assurance that I wouldn't let it go on this long, but there's a couple of, a couple of things that were unique about today. One is the people that came down here at the Boyd Forum raising their issues. But each one of the committee members here today really didn't get into any kind of speechifying or long-drawn-out history lessons. Most of it was to the point in asking, I thought, very, very good questions, and I enjoyed hearing from the public, and they certainly have a right to speak on that. But my apologies to you, to the city staff, and to the audience out there in general for taking so long, but I think it was useful. The, I do think you have a little bit of work to do on the public relations part of it. I just urge you to do that, and I don't think you're in any kind of trouble for a year and a half when this comes up for review, but I do think you're going to have to go through some tough questioning when it does. And I just wish you luck and thank you. Okay, we're at the consent agenda, and that's where all items approved unanimously by the committee, the whole, all three of them were. And the first one, pardon?
Do I just move approval? I just said move approval of them for the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. I don't have to read them out? Oh, the four, four items, yes, okay, four items. I have to read them all, right?
I don't need to.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Pratt.
I move to the approval.
Second. Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was easy. Got two information items. You guys got any questions? No? Council Communications and New Business. Yes, ma'am?
Just very quickly, the resolution that we had done in 2009 for Amtrak service, I know that Mr. Reynolds had also requested for a resolution to be drafted, and I'm happy to hear that the mayor is supporting that as well. It's so very important to our city to get Amtrak back through here. I hope that's coming forward pretty quick.
When, when, should we see that?
I believe that'll be at our next meeting, Councilman.
Okay, that's great.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
I was going to ask that either, maybe on the next agenda, I know that at previous meetings, we've talked in support of doing complete streets policies or some variation on that, and I'd like for us to actually take action rather than just say we support it. And so, I'd hope that we could put it on the agenda. I'm not sure if the attorney would be willing to find some possible language.
And which street policy you...
Complete streets, when we talked about the pedestrian, and it was partially in regards to the group that came at our last council meeting. The other cities have complete streets policies, and there are a lot we can draw from, but I'd like for us to discuss it on our next agenda.
Okay, we could do that, but how would you feel if you and Mr. Spencer were a committee of two and worked with the mayor? Yes?
I'm very interested in it as well. I think we're ready as a council to talk about it.
I think multiple people cared about it, so...
But would you guys rather take care of it, three of you on a committee first?
I think it's quite simple, because complete streets, if you just Google that, I get their newsletter, I get pinged several times a week with things, and it's very interesting stuff, but the cities are, have just gone to that level, and it's not very complicated to do that. There's examples, there's, I mean, since Dr. Pratt just met with Mr. Messer, I think we could work that out, but it's time for us to make a statement and do it.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just so everybody knows, planning is currently looking at this. We certainly can have an update as to where we are in the process with the timeline and when we can expect something to be brought forward for action, if that, if that works.
So, we'd put it on the agenda then next time for a discussion item.
Well, I just feel like we said to that group, we care about that and we want action, and rather than have it be on the planning, you know, we don't know what's going on there, we can take action ourselves to at least direct that we want to get that going.
Anything else from committee members? No. Gary, we don't have open forum here.
I want to speak to the issue, Amtrak. Yeah, hi. And I look back, there's no cards back there to sign up.
Yes, go ahead.
Council Communication, did I just...
That's Communication, yes. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Okay. All right, and I'm not replacing him, I hope. Speaker, I just, I missed the opportunity. What I wanted to say was, the, I think this falls under Council Communication because we, as a council, were all exposed to the administration's concern regarding abandonment or underutilization of school properties and school buildings, and if it's new agenda item that I'm asking for, then that's fine, but I'm, I am ready to take some sort of formal steps regarding, for instance, Spencer Bibbs Elementary School on Sixth Avenue, a completely vacant facility that is a, has a major presence in a neighborhood. It was a facility that had many generations interacting with it, grandparents picking up, walking their children to school, walking them away from school. That whole dynamic is gone. That's just one in our city, but I'm, I guess I'm looking to you all for some sort of guidance because I don't know if it's right for me to individually just show up at a school board meeting, and I don't want to do that. I don't want you all to read about me showing up. I want us to begin to take steps to address it and to get some of these properties that I think are scarring the community.
What do you, what, do you have any ideas right now of where you'd like to see, Council move on this? I know what you'd like the end result to be, but how to get from point A to point B? The problem I see is until we get a superintendent that's willing to move on these issues, that's not, doesn't matter really what we do. And government to government causes, I think, all kinds of like legal problems. I don't know if I'd wait on that or not, if it were a private property owner, that we'd have some recourse. I'm not sure what we can do with another government entity.
I think it's going to be, I look forward to hearing from fellow council members.
Okay. Mr. Gerald's?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, the only really useful part of that facility at this time is the new library, and I believe it cost the school district about $1.5 million. The rest of it is filled with asbestos, based on the timeline in which it was built. So, I don't know if that's something we would want to engage in, but the library that sits on the end could be a useful branch, maybe a library branch, but there's some talk about moving the Macmillan Center and that operation over to that location. So, I would say the first step would be to get with Steve Sharp and Malcolm Thomas, and Steve is the facilities manager, deputy superintendent, and Malcolm Thomas to determine what plans they have for that building, either use or demolition. But I will let you know, and I was around when Spencer Bibb was built, I think, and as you know, in those days, they were using quite a bit of asbestos, and that's one of the... And that's one of the concerns that I would have in terms of utilizing that building. But I did point out to you the availability or the possibility of the library, which is the new addition. It is quite modern and that part of it would be useful. But the first step, of course, would be to negotiate with the property owners and also include the community to see if they have any ideas or thoughts about what to do with that facility. Thank you.
Would council have any objection if Mr. Spencer went and on effect, finding mission to the school board on behalf of council?
That's what I was going to request, is that on a one-on-one basis, sometimes it's better than government trying to work with government. It gets big right away instead of going as a council member saying, "This is in my district. What can be done?"
Okay. I'd take that as you have our blessing unless there's an objection. Dr. Wu, head of the Senate first.
Yes, ma'am. This is a case where emotionally, I agree with you 100% and intellectually, I agree with you 100%. The dilemma we run into is getting into the business of another governmental body. And just like if the school board came to us and said they liked changes in the way we pick up garbage, our reaction probably would be, "Thank you very much. We enjoyed your visit. You know, have a cup of coffee on your way out." I have no problem if you talk to them, but I think it perhaps would be better as an individual rather than as representative of the council because if you're representing council, there may be things that are said that we then might be obligated to, but we've not been part of the decision. So, I understand what you're saying. I understand 100% where you're coming from. I'm with you there, but I'm with Councilman Hall as far as, you know, do we have any right to tell someone else what to do?
Well, Dr. Wu, on that, to allay any fears there, I think that we could also give Mr. Spencer direction that there's not to be any obligation on our part. This is strictly a fact-finding mission, just to check the pulse, the temperature of where they are because the things that I've read in the paper is the superintendent is pretty much immobile on these issues like this. Mr. Townsend.
Not only do you have Spencer Bibb over there, you have the J. Lee Pickens School that's boarded up over there and that's been boarded for years. And additionally, you're going to help wire your Nestri and the Hallmark School in a similar situation. I don't see anything wrong with speaking in terms of what the projected plan because just like we did on the old Blunt School, we're concerned about those buildings lasting a long time in the neighborhoods. And like I said, J. Lee Pickens has been there for years and nothing has been done. So, however we approach it, but I think it should be an issue that, and an agenda item that this council should be concerned about.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, then Dr. Pratt.
I want to appeal to Dr. Wu and to see if you can be so open-minded in perhaps expecting that finally, the model that you've described, that we will have a breakthrough. And what I plan to do, now that you all have given me this opportunity, is to just show other examples where other communities have made it through that impasse that you've described. I just have to remind all of us that if this was an abandoned facility in a neighborhood as elite as Gabarone, don't you think that those residents would be here, meeting after meeting, demanding that something be done? And some of these property owners, while it's not front and center in our lives every day that we're walking to our car or just walking around the neighborhood, this will eventually be the city's problem. It will be their Blunt School problem of 40 years from now. And fortunately, there are means and ways to deal with asbestos. You know, it's certainly, it can create a barrier, but we can, I intend to search for solutions and to show where perhaps property owners such as that, that have amassed that much the control of property, will understand that there is really a long-term solution that generates more revenue for them. And so, that's what I intend on doing. I remain hopeful.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to throw my two cents in that this is something that I think all of us have been concerned about, the school situation. And I think that an alternative or an additional part of this would be to ask the school district to just help us understand, you know, even if they'd be willing to come here and tell us, "Okay, we have Ali and Esther. These are our plans with these facilities," because we ought to hear about that. But I do hope that if we do have them come, that we do it as an open-minded brainstorming possibility. I understand that the school district has been leery of setting foot in City Hall for many years because of bad blood of some history. But I think that we do need to be thinking creatively. I know there's the facility over by Greater Little Rock that's been a problem in that community and it's used as storage. Well, are there things that we as a city can offer? You know, is there something, do we have some storage facility that we can let them use as a trade to help figure out a way to get that solved? So, I hope that as we do this, we do it as a collaborative, we're all in this together as opposed to a, "All right, you're not living up to code. We're going to make you our first case study of our code enforcement foreclosure thing." So, that's what I'd say. Thanks.
Well, Dr. Pratt, Mr. Townsend and I, we're all on the same trip to St. Louis together. One of the larger redevelopers in the country, they knew more about Pensacola than most people that are actively involved in our different governments and boards and quasi-government boards. And one of the things that they told us that was really not a huge surprise to me, but that they would bother to bring it up to us, is that one of the impediments to them wanting to come into the city of Pensacola, they identified us, by the way. We didn't go out and recruit them. They had identified Pensacola. But one of the biggest obstacles to them coming in was the fact that the school district was disengaged from the rest of the community and that it was like it was a separate entity, that it was not integrated in with the community itself. It strictly had a business model and didn't see how it fit into that bigger picture. So, I, as you're speaking to these guys, you can't obligate us, but you could certainly pass that on if you would. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I ask that Mr. Spencer, add to his list of facilities vacant that he may be concerned about would be the gymnasium at the Hall Center located at 30 Tahar Drive. The city, it is in the city limits and that was done when integration occurred and fire, the fire department or fire protection for those students was necessary. But that gymnasium, and I stuck my head in there the other day, it is also being currently used for storage. It would serve as an ideal indoor facility on that end of the county in which there has never been one. But it is a bona fide gymnasium. We used it when I was in high school and the junk that's in there, and I refer to it as junk, that's what it looked like when I looked in, you know, broken computers and tables and desks and junk. But they call it storage, but I would recommend that you add that facility because when we are, as we continue to move forward with the idea of a curfew and we're looking for places to take students, this is not a part of a jail, but it could be a part of a safe house until parents and others can be connected on behalf of, can be contacted on behalf of the students. But at the old Booker T. Washington High School Gymnasium, which is located at 30 East Tahar, it is in the city limits and that would be a facility that could obviously be used as an indoor recreational opportunity for the residents in that part of the county. Thank you.
Will do.
Yes, sir.
Well, along those same lines, it might be, I know the mayor's office has probably been in, had some dialogue regarding the school system, so it might be a good idea that they, you know, we have this, working together on this in terms of the future plans of what they are doing. Additionally, if you recall, the L.A. Coatesy plot that's abandoned, a lot, city lot now where a school was located, we allocated sometime back $65,000 to help demolish the old building. Need to find out, if you would, what happened to that property? Who owns it? Do we have any lien on it as a result of the 65K that we let the individual have? It might be something we can deal with as far as infill housing. So, if we could get a report back on that one, that'd be fine.
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. President, really quickly, yes, the mayor's office has been in contact with the superintendent's office and we're continuing to look for that positive dialogue.
Yeah, so if I could make a point in terms of, we don't want it, like you're pushing them. Now, if the mayor's office talks to them, you know, and if Councilman Spencer's going to them, you might create some tension here. So, I would really suggest that the two of you work together in this regard rather than one going and another one going. I would hope that the mayor's office and the council could be on the same plane as to where we're going in this regard.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?